Good evening.
I think that's a good plan, though.
We do have a quorum and we have a lot of business to get done this evening. So I'd like to ask everybody to take their seats and we will get underway as people continue to come in through the door. Thank you.
Including the sides, right? Yeah.
Good evening and welcome to the 2023 Fall Special Town Meeting. I'm Dan Evans. I'm your moderator and thank you for being here. The tellers have informed me that a quorum is present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. The return of the warrant by the town constable shows that the warrant was properly served, so the meeting is properly constituted. I'd like to ask you to begin the meeting with me tonight with a pledge of allegiance as we do all of our town meetings, so please stand and join with me in pledging allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Thank you. I'll introduce for you our various town officials and volunteers who are up here at the front of the room with me. To my left, your right is our board of, our select board. Gene Healy-Dipold at the chair, Paul Grady vice chair, Jack Creighton, Ellen Maher and Chris Plex, our town manager, Chris Senior, our town council, Carolyn Murray. Behind me, to my right, your left, is our advisory board. Rob Hillman chair, Mary McGoldrick vice chair, Jean Astino, Mike Barkley, Mark Cameron, Fran Collins, Diane Kennedy, Mark Maggi and Meg Wheeler. Our town clerk next to me, Elizabeth Leger, and our assistant town clerk, Elizabeth Anderson. And behind the advisory board are our tellers tonight. Beth Baker, Bill Faulkner, Susan Hobson, Jane King and Michael Putzinger. Our guest policy, since only registered voters of the town are both entitled to vote and entitled to speak at the meeting, is that any of the guests have name tags and they're seating up here in the non-voting section. That section there, I guess if we have to do a hand count, I will ask that section to move down into the main seats for the hand count, just to make it easier for our tellers. This section will be able to count. You should have ideally two different sets of written materials with you this evening. One is the town warrant, which was mailed to all of your houses, which sets forth the items to be voted on, plans to be voted on at the meeting tonight, as well as the full texts of the various bylaw amendments. Those are contained in the town warrant. You also were handed, when you came in tonight, the town manager's proposed motions, which are stapled. Those are the text of the motions that we will actually be starting the discussion with on each warrant article this evening. So you'll notice that at the beginning of each article, I will ask for a motion in the form distributed to the meeting. And when then someone moves, what they're moving is the language that's in that packet of motions. It is in the same subject matter as in the warrants. In some cases, there are differences, but that is the actual controlling language that we will be beginning our discussion with. And if we vote to approve it as so moved, it's that language that was approved. We will vote by voice on each motion unless I'm uncertain of the count or unless seven voters stand to indicate that you doubt my count, which is fine. If I can't make the call or more than seven of you question the call, then we'll vote by hand ballot. And so the tellers will take their stations and we'll vote by hand ballot. When you vote by hand ballot, you will be holding up in the air these pink pieces of paper. So keep them handy in case you need them. If you would like to speak on a motion, please move to a microphone to be recognized. And then once recognized by me, please begin by giving your name and street address. Please keep the debate concise and to the point. All debate must be courteous and respectful, particularly if you're referring to remarks that somebody prior to you has made. I would remind you that brevity is both courteous and effective. Sarcasm is never appropriate. Generally, it should not be necessary to refer to specific individuals who have spoken. You can refer to the substance of their marx, but please don't refer to the individual. Speakers are limited to five minutes, except when arranged in advance. If at any point you have a question about the procedure or the conduct of the meeting, including a concern that I may have done something incorrectly, you should seek to be recognized. Let me know you have a point of order and then state your question or concern. Finally, a procedural note. Many of you are familiar with a motion for the previous question. That's a motion made to stop debate after a meeting feels like there's been enough debate on a particular motion. It brings an immediate vote. And if you're making a motion to move the question, you may not at the same time make any substantive remarks on the motion. So if you'd like to move the question, you have to do nothing but move the question. It will stop debate. At that point, we will then vote on the motion to stop debate. It requires two-thirds vote for adoption. If it passes, we then proceed to voting on the main motion. If it fails, we keep debating. We are going to try very, very hard to push through and get all of our business done tonight. So I'd ask everybody's patience with that. And towards the end of the evening, stamina. Are there any questions before we get into the business of the meeting? Great. We will start with Article One, Amendments to the Fiscal 2024 Operating Budget. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. The motion has been made. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. It requires majority vote for adoption. I'll recognize our town manager, Chris Senior.
Good evening, everybody. There are three short amendments here. The first is to move some money from water retained earnings into water system maintenance. That's all money that's been generated from water fees. The second is to put some additional funds into the RTF. There's been some equipment and staffing challenges up there which have raised costs. And the third is a transfer we do at every town meeting, which is money that comes in from our cable companies, Comcast and Verizon. And this money then gets passed through directly to operate 143 TV.
Thank you. The Select Board recommends approval by a vote of five to zero, and the Advisory Committee has recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. The motion under Article One, again, it does require a majority vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article One, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article Two, Unpaid Bills from Previous Fiscal Years. I'm told there are not any, which is great. May I have a motion that the article be indefinitely postponed? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. We've had a motion and the maiden seconded that the article be indefinitely postponed. Is there any discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote for indefinite postponement. Does require majority. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article Three, Stabilization Funds. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Requires a majority vote for adoption. Again, I'll recognize our town manager, Chris Senior.
There are two transfers in this article. Both follow the town's financial policies. The first is $350,000 going to the OPEB trust fund, which is a, if I checked the numbers right this morning, about $6.7 million in that fund at the moment. And this will continue to match the requirements in the OPEB policy adopted by the Select Board Advisory Committee and PEB Committee. And this $500,000 being transferred into the Capital Stabilization Fund, which will be able, be available for appropriation at the annual town meeting.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero, and the Advisory Committee has recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero. Is there discussion? Mr. Davis?
Tim Davis, 257 Atlantic Avenue. Ten years ago, Cohasset had a significant unfunded OPEB liability, no plan and less than an optimal credit rating. OPEB, or as Chris mentioned, other post-employment benefits, is the insurance the town provides for retired employees. The town spends about $6 million a year for current and retiree medical insurance. The Select Board in 2012 asked a small group of citizens to address this growing fiscal issue. Today, the town has 5.5 million in OPEB, maybe that's more now. A plan in place to fully fund that trust by the mid 2030s, and largely due to that plan, has a triple-A credit rating. That credit rating alone saves the town millions of dollars over time in reduced interest costs on our debt. On behalf of the Post-Employment Benefits Committee, I would like to thank the Select Board and the Cohasset community for the continued support of this program as it benefits each and every Cohasset taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. Motion under Article Three, Stabilization Funds, does require majority vote for adoption. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article Four, Allocation of Funds for One-Time Costs. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Is there a second? Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Does require a majority vote for adoption. Again, I'll recognize our town manager, Chris Senior.
There are four items in this article. First, it takes money that the town has collected to date from the National Oakwood Settlement, which is a little more than $74,000, and it takes it and puts it aside. The town is required to spend that money in a fairly limited parameter area for anti-addiction work, and this will primarily be spent in cooperation with the Cohasset Safe Harbor Organization. The next one is money that's coming out of cemetery plot sales. That's a fund that's set aside separately from the cemeteries to upgrade the cemetery software. That's something that's desperately needed. The paper records have all been updated now. They need to be computerized. The next two, Fund Required ADA Accessibility Pathways. The first at the Sawyer Street Playground and the second at the Beechwood Playground. Those would be acquired over the winter. If the funding in Article Six is approved for the Beechwood Playground, the $45,000 from Beechwood won't have to be spent from this because the Beechwood Playground plan has a new surface built into that. So, but this is, in this article, is just in case because we are under a state requirement to get that work done, either through this or through the rehabilitation of the playground.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero, and the Advisory Committee has recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero. Is there discussion? Mr. Jenkins?
Julian Jenkins, Jerusalem Road. I have a quick question. When we're talking about free cash, what was the free cash last year?
About $2.4 million, which is just in line with the town's policies.
That's what we had the year before also.
It was about the same amount the year before, which is again, right in line with the town's policy. It's about 3%.
I call that over taxation.
Is there further discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. The motion under Article Four, it does require majority vote for adoption. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted. All right. Was that from the non-voting section? Yeah, please, please don't do that. The motion was adopted unanimously. Okay, in advance of Article Five, as many of you know, we have several articles that jointly the Select Board has proposed as a result of the working of a group called the Cohasset Financial Planning Working Group. And so they have a presentation that's going to cover several of these articles. So before we get into the first article that they're going to cover, we'll have the presentation now. So I'll recognize for the Cohasset Financial Planning Working Group, Gene Healy-Dipold, Lance Dial, Rob Hillman, Brian Host and Chris McClellan.
Thank you. Good evening. The Cohasset Financial Planning Working Group was formed following the Spring Town Meeting. The group included the chairs, includes the chairs of four committees. Gene Healy-Dipold for the Select Board. Lance Dial for the School Committee, Brian Host for the Capital Budget Committee, and I'm Rob Hillman. I'm the chairman of the Advisory Committee. We were asked to look at the long-term financial needs of the town and options for the town to manage the cost of those future needs. The members of the group participated in this working group in their personal capacities. We weren't acting as representatives of our boards. We've been asked to present a succinct statement of why these, particularly four projects, are before this meeting altogether. In short, this committee was supposed to be really dull. We were going to do long-range economic data gathering and make recommendations to address capital periods and finances over a period of a decade or more. At the outset, the capital needs that were identified included deficiencies in the Town Hall building on Highland Avenue and the conditions at the Police and Fire Building on Elm Street, both of which were inadequate, and both of which would require expensive repairs and renovations, which would not finally resolve those, fully resolve those inadequacies. We also recognize the town's concerns, concerns, as discussed at recent town meetings, about the ability of the town to maintain its school buildings, which are the town's largest physical assets, and concerns about the roads and sidewalks, as well as the maintenance and development of recreational facilities. Shortly after we started this long-term process, to our collective surprise, opportunities to address two of these needs presented themselves. And these opportunities are before you tonight in the form of, first, the option to acquire a building at 135 King Street as a new police station and substation for the fire department, and second, the opportunity to acquire a building under construction at One Pleasant Street to house Town Hall functions. Our committee reviewed these two opportunities and issued an interim report recommending the purchase of both buildings as opportunities which, if missed, are unlikely to present themselves or anything like themselves in the foreseeable future. Under normal circumstances, projects of this nature would have taken more time to review, but here, they're time-boxed and they will not, believe, be around if they're not acted upon. The review of these opportunities was, however, thorough and satisfied us that the buildings respond to the town's needs. A further important factor, very important factor, is that purchasing existing buildings is much less expensive for a town to do when it's compared with the town acquiring land and building buildings from scratch. Our working group also realized that town meetings had discussed major capital projects. There have been frequent concerns and that the cost of one project was in competition with other projects and would postpone addressing important and strongly held needs of the town. Specifically, a concern that money raised for, to address a public safety or Town Hall need would squeeze out issues with the maintenance of school buildings, roads, sidewalks or recreation facilities. As a group, therefore, we recommended a set of proposals come to town meeting to consider these issues together and to have an adult conversation about the cost of all of them as needed improvements. With respect to the two funds that are proposed in addition to the building issues, one is reserved to major capital repairs or improvements to the school buildings. And we recommend adoption because the proposals restrict the use of funds raised by additional taxes each year to that specific use. Similarly, with respect to the special purpose fund, special stabilization fund for roads and sidewalks, that too is restricted to that use. We believe that raising these funds are superior to a general override because they're because of these restrictions. And if the funds were to catch up with the conditions that they're designed to address, they, unlike a regular two and a half override, may be sunsetted. Our group sought to provide each citizen with important information that you could use in evaluating these proposals individually in the aggregate. Assisted by town staff, we gathered data about our town and other comparable towns in greater Boston in terms of their tax levels and debt levels. We considered the ability of the town to fund the proposals out of the existing tax level, levy. We concluded that purchasing buildings could not be paid for without borrowing through excluded debt, and we concluded that the significant increase in school facility and road costs could not be funded annually without new taxes. Otherwise, that spending would crowd out other operating budget and capital budget spending. Looking at peer communities and Cohasset's borrowing and tax history, we found that we have not taken a significant, taken on significant capital expense in 20 years. In conclusion, the work of our group is not done. No matter which of these proposals are adopted, there remain substantial issues to study concerning future revenue and cost issues, both in the capital and operating budgets. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. With that as an introduction, we'll proceed to Article Five, Town Hall. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. It does require two-thirds vote for adoption. I'll recognize for the Select Board, Gene Healy-Dipold, and there's also going to be a video.
Article Five of the 2023 Special Town Meeting Warrant proposes the relocation of Town Hall along with all operations and will acquire the building located at One Pleasant Street in the heart of Cohasset. The project, if approved at town meeting and at the ballot, will move all Town Hall offices to the first floor of One Pleasant Street, which is about 8,000 square feet. Meeting space will also be included. This is an example of the floor plan, where the treasurer collector's office, the town clerk's office, building and public health, just to name a few, will all be located within just feet of each other. The second and third floors of One Pleasant Street would add 13 rental apartment units. Four are required to be deeded as affordable. The Select Board will rent the other ones as workforce and other housing to serve our local residents. Rental proceeds will be used to manage and maintain the building. As we've all seen, exhaustive studies of the current Town Hall located at 41 Highland Avenue have shown that major systems are failing or have failed, and it has poorly designed and inadequate space to support the operations of Cohasset's local government. If Town Hall is relocated, One Pleasant Street will meet the town's operational needs. The village's location will allow for 30 additional spots for night and weekend parking to help support local restaurants and businesses. Since One Pleasant is already being built, town employees will be able to seamlessly move in. With the exception of a vestibule and vaults, the building will be move-in ready. The building will cost $9.1 million. Furnishings of vestibule and vaults will cost no more than $900,000. We will only spend as much as needed to outfit the building. Most importantly, One Pleasant Street will make access easier for residents. All departments will be centrally located on the first floor within feet of each other. To fund Town Hall, a debt exclusion will be required. The median home tax increase for a home assessed at $1 million will start at $220 a year for 30 years and will decrease over the life of the bond. If One Pleasant Street is approved, planning for the restoration of historic Town Hall will follow at annual town meeting in the spring. Thank you.
Good evening, town meeting. I'm Gene Healy-Dipold of your Select Board. The Select Board unanimously recommends the purchase of One Pleasant Street to serve as the new Cohasset Town Hall. We heard you when this town said it needed a more cost-effective option for Town Hall. We have a unique opportunity to purchase a brand-new move-in-ready building in the village that costs less than all prior proposals to address our Town Hall needs. As you heard in the video, we intend to use the first floor for municipal offices, and the building comes with 30 parking spots. The building also has 13 rental units on the second and third floor. Four will be affordable, and the other nine will be focused on serving our local residents. There are additional parking spots for these units as well, in addition to the 30 parking spots. We have consulted professionals, including lawyers, local property managers, insurers and a housing expert. Based on that research and our conservative projections, we plan for the units to yield a positive operating income and anticipate putting those proceeds aside in a reserve fund to maintain the entire building. As to our existing Town Hall, in April 2023, as most of you know, we received a $26 million bid to renovate and rebuild our existing Town Hall. In 2018, the town received a $6 million estimate to repair certain systems presenting immediate life safety issues. This 2018 estimate was not comprehensive. It did not factor in construction costs such as prevailing wage requirements, relocation costs and many other items. Since 2018, the intervening years have not been kind. Inflation and post-pandemic pricing have dramatically increased public construction costs. For example, the 2018 report quotes $114,000 for fire safety upgrades. A few weeks ago, we recorded $1.5 million for those fire upgrades to our existing Town Hall. The high repair cars, high repair costs are a disappointment to those of us who wanted to see that for one time, all-in repair solution was more financially feasible to our existing Town Hall. But the reality of these costs of public construction were considerations in pursuing One Pleasant Street. We will continue to maintain and repair the Town Hall until we get input from the community on a long-term solution. We have begun to discuss options, but are holding back until we know what happens with One Pleasant Street, which will drive options. We don't intend to seek a tax increase with respect to the existing Town Hall. The biggest risk we do face is that this One Pleasant Street proposal fails. Staying in our Town Hall is not a responsible option. Our furnace field failed, our elevator previously failed, and all major systems are beyond their useful life. By not taking advantage of this unique and creative opportunity, we fear the only options left for consideration will be much more expensive than the One Pleasant Street option and prior Town Hall options. We have a chance now to slice through this Gordian knot and pursue fiscally response, fiscally responsible, pragmatic solution, and we encourage all to vote for the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. With the Advisory Committee, I'll recognize Mark Maggi.
Good evening. Mark Maggi, 19 Stanton, wrote, "I'm a member of the Advisory Committee, and I voted in favor of this article. For the sake of honesty, I also voted in favor of the article for the proposal from town meeting six months ago that included a large remodel and rebuild of the Town Hall in the common. Although I and the advisory board supported the proposal six months ago, the town as a whole did not, and that's part of the process. So government did what government's supposed to do. They listened to the voice of the people. This article being presented before you is the result of that. We need a solution for Town Hall. That much cannot be debated. The issues with the current building are numerous, and you saw them in the slideshow. And while we can have a reasonable debate about the size and scale of a Town Hall building, our municipal employees need a building from which to work and conduct the business of town government. This building has some unique benefits that you just heard about to the town, and those should be considered when deciding how you'll vote for this article. While serving as a base for town government functions, it will also contribute to our town's affordable housing needs and generate offsetting revenue in the process. So for those whose primary concerns were costs, your voices were heard, and there are multiple reasons to support this article despite your opposition to the previous Town Hall article. This town has a lot of needs. I recognize that the funding for this building does not exist in a vacuum. I have school-aged children, and I understand the school building needs and plan to vote for the School Stabilization Fund. I co-choose sports, and I understand the needs we have for fields and courts, and I plan to vote for the Community Preservation Community Act article, sorry. I've had a babysitter lock herself out of the house while the toaster oven was running, and instead of calling my wife and I for the garage code, she called the fire department to let her in through a window. So I understand the police and safety needs, and I publicly apologize to the fire department for that call. I also plan to vote for the satellite station for police and fire. But funding for this product doesn't impact the feasibility of those projects. We can do multiple things at once, and frankly, we're going to have to. We've kicked this can down the road as far as we can. We've kicked this can down the road as far as we can. I want to reiterate what Mike, Mark, Mike Barkley said six months ago. There is a cost to an action. We need a building from which to carry out the functions of town governance. And the next option, because the town looked into many options before bringing this proposal to you tonight, is likely to be worse and costlier. If you voted against the proposal six months ago, I hope you'll seriously consider voting for this proposal. The majority of the feedback was the proposal was too big and too expensive, and this proposal addresses those criticisms. So for those like myself who voted in favor of this proposal six months ago, we must be aware that a broad support for that plan was not there. So for that reason, I support this article, and I hope you'll consider doing the same. Thank you.
Thank you. With the Capital Budget Committee, I recognize Michael Deck.
Good evening, friends and neighbors and fellow Cohasseters. I'm Mike Deck. I live at 27 Parker Ave, Cohasset. The Capital Budget Committee, of which I'm a member, reviews and discusses capital expenditures on behalf of the town and makes recommendations to town meeting as to whether or not a warrant article should be approved or not. In the Capital Budget Committee, our members pursue deep review on all aspects of a proposal. It seems that our committee is alone in going after all of the possible pitfalls, not to be naysayers, but to try and save the town from a poor decision. That's, that's my political statement, which I apologize if anyone's offended. Our Capital Budget Committee moved to not recommend this article. The vote was three to not recommend and two to recommend. And I'm here tonight to try and give you an overview of how we came to that decision. Two of our members did vote to support, and I think they feel that the pros outweigh the cons on this particular warrant article. There were three of us, myself included, who voted to not recommend, and I'd like to review some of these items. As I go through this list, I will try and be brief, Mr. Moderator. Um, but I feel that we have some important points. Other members who voted to not recommend have sent me their thoughts, and I've tried to incorporate all of those thoughts in, into these remarks. The affordable housing component really complicates the purchase, and we haven't really talked about that yet. I imagine that we will very soon. But the affordable housing component, as proposed by the select board, is to provide housing units at below-market rate. There are those of us on the affordable, uh, excuse me, sorry, on the Capital Budget Committee who feel that market rates would help defray the cost of the purchase and perhaps reduce the amount of a tax increase required. The affordable housing requirement that our town must meet has been satisfied until the 2030 census. So this particular project, now still owned by its developer, includes four so-called deeded affordable housing units that helps our town meet its 10% threshold for affordable housing. So in this purchase of 9.1 million, there's no added value to the town if we buy nine units and then rent them below market rate. Now, why would we do such a thing? And I'm sure the select board will help explain it better than I. But the intent is to provide more affordable housing as a public good, which is commendable. But when it comes to a tax increase where we're digging into our own pockets, then I have to pause. And that, that went into some of our voting. Now, once the town takes on the affordable housing experiment, we'll be locked.
Quick time check. You're at about four minutes.
Do I not get the same amount of time as the people who preceded me?
You may. They were all under five minutes.
Okay.
You, you keep going, but just try to, try to be as efficient as you can, please.
I will. Once the town takes on the affordable housing experiment, we'll be locked in for years. The experiment will be difficult to unwind, and the town could be faced with management pressures because the town manager will be running point on, uh, on supervising the management company. And unforeseen liabilities and costs may be incurred for solving problems that we can't yet foresee. We are not landlords. We're not in the landlord business as a town. The town will lose out on property tax revenue on the building and the apartments. Then finally, there were some gaps in the process to get the building to the special town meeting, understandably. But you should know that the planning board did not review. Their input is missing. Our town archivist had no input on placement of, um, the vaults. And at this point, we still don't have a plan for our historic 1851 building and no funding or plan in place for the annex. Thank you for your time. I'm sure I'll have more to say during our debate. And, um, once again, the vote was three to two, and those people voting for certainly had good reason to feel that the pros outweighed the cons. I hope I've been somewhat balanced, and if not, I did my best. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we'll open it up now for general discussion. Mr. Brewer?
Clark Brewer, uh, North Main Street. Uh, so I've been on the planning board for 15 years and, um, a licensed architect for 30, doing a variety of affordable housing and municipal projects. Uh, I was also chairman of the 2019 master plan that was adopted. Uh, I spent some time reviewing the considerable and thorough efforts to reimagine the Town Hall that were on the town's website, talking to people, and I appreciate our municipal leaders and the selectmen exploring options for our Town Hall. But I have concerns about the One Pleasant Street option. First is size. The existing Town Hall is 20,000 square feet, 13,000 square feet of office space. What's proposed is 9,000 square feet and overall reduction of 4,000 or 30%, not including the auditorium spaces. The second is cost. The $10 million proposal, doesn't identify the costs for renovating our, uh, existing Town Hall. Well, it's less than the, what's now 26 million, uh, with 30,000 square feet of Town Hall in the last proposal. It's substantially more than the 2018 $6 million estimate that, uh, that that was identified in, uh, by EBI Consulting to upgrade both 1850 and 18, uh, 1987 structures. A third point is parking. The existing Town Hall has over 60 parking spots, not including the spots on, on the street. Um, these, the, the, the site has 30 parking spots that the planning board reviewed and approved as a special permit. And there's a satellite, a parking spot of 30, but these, these parking spots unfortunately would, would conflict with some of the village business needs. And as far as I know, there's been no shared, uh, parking analysis done to see what, uh, impact a Town Hall in the village would, um, would have. Four, our village zoning. And back in 2008, we studied changing our zoning to make our village more vibrant with mixed use, subsidizing commercial space with, uh, the equity created by residential space. And taking a significant building out of the village, um, will have a, will have an impact on the potential future vitality of the, of the village. Uh, number five is special permit. The planning board issued, uh, would have to be reviewed as a modification. And I, I'm just a planning board member. I can't say what the planning board would say about these changes. The affordable housing, uh, units that we did approve was 14, where all 14 would count because they were set up as rental and 25% are, uh, deemed affordable. So we actually get the total 14 units under the LIP program, uh, to count under our subsidized housing inventory. Um, the last two points would be that I'm not sure that you can avoid Chapter 149 altogether. I, I don't know that. And then the rehab of our existing Town Hall would be, uh, under Chapter 149 Public Bid Laws. But the most important thing is having a, having a Town Hall on our common and where it is is a part of our cultural identity and has been since our inception. And I, and I think that rebuilding our existing Town Hall, resurrecting it from whatever use it could be if we have a different Town Hall would be the less expensive option and preferable from a cultural perspective. And then finally, our master plan indicated the selectmen back in 2018 had, had four main points where the, they confirm, affirm that the Town Hall should stay on the common, that it should be safe, the historic portion should be restored, and the budget should be reasonable to have a net neutral tax impact on town residents. That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, is there further discussion? Sir?
My name is Peter Longley. I live at 12 Rustic Drive. And I just have a, a question and an observation about the presentation, which suggests that the current Town Hall is, uh, unoccupiable. And after the new project would be completed, if it was approved, would become vacant. That is the impression I get, since it appears to be that the argument is that it's unoccupiable. If that is the case, then what, then a casual observer would have to ask the question, why is it not a part of this plan to sell that property? Not in favor of it, but why would it not be a plan to sell that property to recover the costs of this project? Uh, although I have to say, I would certainly prefer to have that Town Hall stay where it is and be renovated. Thank you.
Thank you. Does somebody from the select board or other body want to address the question about the existing Town Hall?
So right now, the Town Hall is occupied, and we have people working in it. We have people working in it in their coats, for example, last week when the furnace broke. Um, but work still needed to happen to serve all of our residents, such as you all sitting out here. So the issues are getting worse and worse, and we are trying to responsibly address them. Um, that said, we are in the process of getting, um, quotes and have been to try to figure out what we can do to responsibly maintain the existing Town Hall to continue using it as swing space until we get to a longer-term solution. You just suggested one solution. I'm sure many people have feelings about potentially selling the Town Hall and how that would play out. And so our thought was that we did need to figure out what was happening first with One Pleasant Street before we began exploring the multitude of different solutions that we could explore with a Town Hall building. Um, and there's a, there's a lot of potential options out there. It's a very desirable location. We have a lot of great nonprofits within Cohasset. People have come up to us with some very interesting ideas, but the bottom line is we're reluctant to spend more of the town's money on Town Hall, the existing Town Hall, without knowing what's going to happen with One Pleasant Street, because if the One Pleasant Street vote does not go through, we did not want to spend money that would go further into a hole. So we're reluctant to throw bad or good money after bad until we have more clarity.
Thank you. Sir in the center?
Uh, John Donahue, 3 Ledger Drive. So there are a couple of questions, and, and I appreciate the prior comment. It was one of my questions that was out there. It's important, just as a reminder, that neither the Town Hall nor the original theater are historic in ever, in and of themselves. It is the common that is of historic value, and that is the registered historic property, not the Town Hall or the theater. Why, so the 8,000 square feet that the town purports to serve as the future Town Hall, it sounds like the, our use would require the entire building. And so I, I guess I'm kind of curious, uh, why half of the building would be turned over to housing when the town is going to basically cut its own use of space in half? Why doesn't it just take the entire building? As I'm in the domain.
So the question, I think, was essentially adequacy of the square footage of the new building. Does someone want to address that, please? That, can I paraphrase the question appropriately?
Yes, thank you.
So I think if I understood your question correctly, with respect to the new building at One Pleasant Street that we are proposing the town by, it is already being built right now, and it is permitted for, first floor is, can be used as municipal, but the next two floors are already being built out as rental units. They are literally, right now as we speak, in the configuration, as you saw in the video, as rental units. And so the building is in existence, and it's moving towards probably the middle stage of construction and will be done soon. In terms of the question about how are we able to move from approximately the square footage we are currently using right now in the existing Town Hall to a smaller square footage at One Pleasant Street? The reality is, in the existing Town Hall, there is a lot of space that is not necessarily being used for municipal services. The auditorium takes up a lot of space, um, in terms of that space in the existing Town Hall. And we've also took, taken a look, including based on feedback we got at town meeting, including about things like remote, sir, um, remote working and, and other opportunities to try to narrow the municipal needs to really try to get to the most cost-effective solution. And so we did review the first floor of One Pleasant Street with the, which is 8,000 square feet and concluded that it would be acceptable for our municipal needs in light of continuing to press to try to manage the cost effectively.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jenkins?
Leonard Jenkins, 198 Jerusalem, uh, a question. Now, are there only going to be 13 apartments? And one, the 14th apartment is going to be used as the break room for the town employees? Is that still in effect?
Yes. Yes.
And one other question about parking. How many parking spots are allotted for the apartments?
I believe there's approximately four, 13.
13?
Yes.
So you only have 13 parking spots for the apartments, and we're getting 30, you said, for Town Hall? So if someone is running and has more than one vehicle, or on weekends, if two or three of the apartments want to have a party, they're going to be using that parking lot. And then, of course, there's the Town Hall parking lot behind it. But if anyone has ever noticed, that parking lot is half-closed from November through April for snow plowing. So we're not really getting any, gaining any parking in downtown area.
Thank you. Ms. Dormister?
Jackie Dormister, 111 Atlanta Cav. I think it would be a mistake to move Town Hall from the common and abandon the existing historic building and the annex. When possible locations for a new Town Hall were discussed a few years ago, the consensus was to remain on the common. The common is the heart of Cohasset. It's the site of the earliest meeting house and the center of many cultural as well as civic activities. The proposal to move Town Hall to the new residential commercial building at One Pleasant Street does not make sense to me. We would be conducting the town's business, business at a nondescript site in a structure built for other purposes. Not only is the proposed site inferior to the present one, but the new building is inappropriate and inadequate. It does not look like a Town Hall, and it's too small. It has only one meeting room for boards and committees. It does not accommodate the archive vault that is now in the basement of the annex and holds the town's most historic documents, as well as the permanent records of town departments and committees. I am the town archivist, but had no input into the disposition of these documents and records. I was shocked to learn last month that the plan was to move the vault to the police station on Elm Street, where all connection to Town Hall would be lost. For both practical and symbolic reasons, I urge you to vote no on this article.
Thank you. Uh, no, sorry. I got, got gentleman in the back and then on the side.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, Paul Antico. Uh, first of all, I just want to thank everybody who, who's put a lot of time and work into this. It's been a long time, and I confess with five kids at home, the last time I remember this. a long time and I confess with five kids at home, the last time I remember this, we passed the $15 million at town hall that unfortunately didn't get through the vote. But I know it's hard work. I know everybody has reasons not to do everything. I do have a question though, I, and I appreciate the coming up with unique solutions like this. I think that kind of thinking is, is what we need to finally figure out what's going to work. The question I have is related to the cost. We've talked about 9.1 million and then another 900,000, so 10 million. I think the comparable was 26. My question is, what, what is the real comparable number on an apples to apples basis? So if we go ahead with this project at 10 million, we still have to put money into the existing town hall auditorium, I assume. I assume that we don't plan on letting kind of the, the harder class that fall apart. And then I assume this, we're going to be, you know, there would be a knocking down of the quote unquote new wing that people have hated here since well before I got here and, and building something there. So I, I'd love to know if anybody's done the work to say this is the, this is the cost of this project and everything else involved versus that 26 number. It would really, it would help me at least really understand if this best makes sense. So if somebody could address that, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Is there someone that would like to address Mr. Antico's question?
So just to start with one comparable. Right now, the town has a purchase and sale agreement with the developer for One Pleasant Street for $9.1 million, subject to this town meeting vote and the special election. And that's approximately $375 a square foot for a building of that size. The bid that we got back from town hall for the last, in the April 2023 town meeting was a $26 million bid, and that was at approximately $900 a square foot. So if we had to build a new town hall or a new building, the cost of public construction is extremely high for the town, which is why we were searching for essentially a commercial building that was ready made. That's just the reality of public construction, unfortunately for the town. In terms of your question about how much does the existing town hall cost in terms of repairs, et cetera? That's a hard question to answer because it does determine what the future options are. Is it just the preservation of the historic building? Is it partnering with a nonprofit to maintain this as a community asset, which in theory could lower the price at the end of the day, including through CPC grants? There's no question that the town hall has a lot of repairs to be done. And I just quoted one, the 1.5 million for fire suppression. We know the roofs and windows, for example, are approximately, I want to say $900,000 for the old auditorium to replace. And so the all in cost really depends on what future option the town takes. Do we do a partnership option? Do we do another option to try to reduce cost in addressing the town hall while still maintaining it as a community asset and restoring it to its old glory?
Thank you. I had recognized Mr. Coin there and then woman in the front and then the woman in the back right.
Alex Koinis, Atlantic Avenue. What can we expect for an interest rate on the municipal bond, number one? And number two, what is the total cost of this project over 30 years of bonding?
A question on interest rate and total cost over 30 years.
So in the short term, this would be borrowed of, the, the first bar would be a short term borrowing if this was approved at, at as low an interest rate as we can get until the project is completed, which involves getting the furnishings and any of the other equipment that has to be done. We have a final price that we go out to bid. The current interest rates on long term notes are in the four plus percent range. We're at a AAA bond rating. We're going to continue to watch the markets and see where things go. I, I think it's fair to say that it's more expensive than it would have been a couple of years ago when interest rates were lower, but the town still has a AAA rating. And we'll see where it goes. I, I can't, I mean, I, I can't estimate the long term cost until we have those interest rates. That said, that's what we're looking at, about a, about probably four plus percent over about 30 years. And should this be approved and the cost are finalized, that's when we'll know when the exact, exact amount is. Everyone will know. So one of the things that will be key is this will not affect people's taxes probably in full impact for two years at least.
Thank you. Woman here in the center.
Kathleen McGuire, Tapella Road. We talk about affordable housing. Is there an option to make it senior housing or just housing for Cohasset residents?
So the board has been discussing this and we, we, we know that we are required to have four affordable housing units at approximately what's called 80% area median wide income, which for Cohasset is $82,000. And so you can't make more than $82,000 and live in those units. And the rent for that would be approximately $2,000 for the four affordable units. We have been talking about with respect to the other units doing more of a local preference and workforce housing approach and doing a higher area median income, looking at potentially 120% area median income, which would be approximately 120,000. So the rental, monthly rental for those units could be, for example, 2,400 to 2,700, and that would be focused on local preference. So that could be seniors, that could be workforce, it could be local residents who fit within those income eligibility. So they can't have an income that's over that, but they can have one that's under that. And so that's what we're looking at, and that's what a lot of towns do, including towns on Cape Cod in terms of trying to manage a mix of really moderate and affordable incomes when managing these properties, including to ensure that your workforce can actually qualify for these units, because if, for example, you have husband and wife, then all of a sudden you have limitations that could easily make people exempt out of qualifications for these units. And so we want to make sure, or, you know, two seniors, you can quickly override the eligibility restrictions, which is why we're trying to provide some flexibility to ensure we can in fact serve our local residents.
Thank you. Do you have another question?
The parking space, the 13 parking spaces you have set up for these rental units?
Yes.
People are only going to have one car per unit? So if there's two people in a residence, where are they going to park and what's going to happen on like Tuesday nights? Meetings and board meetings and everything else?
So there are, there are 13 dedicated spots just for them. There's 30 parking spots that also come with the parcel. There is also in addition to the parcel, and I'm not sure how many folks know about this, but on Pleasant Street, right next to the parcel, there is another town parking lot containing another 30 spots. So we're really talking about a total of approximately 75, 74 spots in that area. And again, a lot of people don't use that other parking lot that abuts the property, but it would be available for public parking if there's overflow needed.
Thank you. Could I ask, if you have multiple questions, it'll be efficient if you ask your, all your questions at first, and then we can try and get answers for you quickly. Woman here in the back, back left, I guess.
Yes, my name is Jean Livingston. I live at 63 Chittenden Lane. I've lived in Cohasset for over 43 years and I've been a taxpayer for 43 years. A lot of people might not know this, but years ago, we needed a new elementary school. So the town decided to build a new elementary school and take the old elementary school and sell it to, to, to offset the cost of the new elementary school. Well, a few minutes into them deciding to do that, they decided that the library would move to the old elementary school and we would renovate the library. But then we would sell the building on South Main Street that housed the old library to offset the cost of the new library. Then the historic building, historical society moved into the old library and nothing was ever sold. So my point, I guess, is I'm very baffled why we don't have a actual plan for the town hall other than to have an impulsivity buy.
Thank you. Have the woman in the center.
My name is Amy Glassmeyer and I live at 63 Howe Road. I also am the vice chair of the planning board. I also am, in some sense, partly the employer of the staff, of the staff of town. What I think about is what it's like to be in the building that we have people in now. I've taught in institutions all of my life. And at a certain point, we are required by law to tear buildings down and renovate them and build them with new technology so that people's breathing and comfort are, come to mind. And I'm struggling with this conversation because we're not trying to solve that problem. But that's the fundamental problem is what is it like to work in the existing town hall now? I spent five years with all of my planning board friends in, in the basement. And every time I went in there, I thought to myself, what am I breathing? Where, I can't see, there's not a plug works. I mean, so I appreciate the things that we care about and I appreciate the enormous work that everybody's done. But in the end, people who are working for us are doing us a favor. So we want to have to include them in the decision about what the future looks like. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got Mr. Satchuk and then here.
Good evening. My name is Wayne Satchuk. And I'm a lifelong resident of Cohasset. And for the last 52 years, I've served on the planning board of every board in town except the selectman. I didn't want to do that for anything in the world. So so the latest thing, I was on the town hall building committee and we're the ones that cut that nice 40, 24 to 26 million dollar amount, which is, it's, it's sad and but if they did do some other things on the plans, we could have cut it down a little bit perhaps. But in fact, I'm really in favor of this, this idea because I think it, it, it makes it so that we move forward. Okay? And this, this all started in, in 1925 to 1928, when the town hall was first being considered. We bought the house next to the existing town hall, which is already there, 1850 or 80. We bought the house next door. There's a nice picture of the house in the barn. We were going to build a new freestanding town hall there almost 100 years ago. So it never happened. And I honestly believe that the, the addition that was put on can be rehab nicely, not for a lot of money and have uses today like cultural, like taking the facilities, people and leaving them there and not having to have them move over to the, where the finance is and everything like that. So, and by the way, our number one tenant that we would have is the Cohasset Dramatic Society. And they've been there since 1903, I think is the right, if it isn't, it was 1913. And they have a lease that was for, I think perpetuity. And they are absolutely willing to get the money to fix up that if they can continue using it. Under the plans that we had before, they could only use it if it was available and not usable for anything else in the town. And that, it does, didn't fit well with me. So I really think this is a good value. It, we can't lose with it really. And as far as parking, no one said, why don't we go to the MBTA and lease some of the space that's next to it that they still own, that we used to own, that we sold to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. David Farag, 39 Beachwood Street. I was on the first two committees to, to restore the old town hall and the annex. And that started, that process started over 15 years ago. With this current project, while it is true that people have through surveys and through previous town meetings voted that they wanted the town hall on the common, the people also voted that they didn't want to pay for it. So we had two irreconcilable positions that needed to be reconciled by the current select board. And I think they've done a really good job of that. The current Pleasant Street building, we are not buying a project, we are buying a building and getting the keys. So all of the risks that you have in construction, the change orders that drive up the costs of construction are not here. We don't have to worry about that. If you vote for this tonight and then on Saturday, we will be getting the keys to a building to end up having the town employees move into it. And not only that, the cost of the project total all in is less than half the cost of the project, which was back in April for the restoration and renovation of the old town hall and the annex. So for those reasons, everybody voted last time that they didn't like the price of the town hall. Well, you're getting it at a 50% discount, so I hope you like it tonight. And I would encourage everyone to please vote for this so we can finally put to bed what to do with our town hall employees so they can have a building that's in the 21st century and bring our town government into the 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm, I'm Jeff Chubb on Black Rock Road. First off, thank you. Six months ago, I had a question if we voted no for that, if we'd be back here six months ago, like six months later, voting on the same thing all over again. So thanks for answering that one. But Jean, I do have some, it seems like you're the lady who's helping us all nonstop. So if we say yes to this, then essentially we're going to have a $20 million albatross hanging over our neck for the town hall and fixing it later. Is that correct? Is there, you've said a lot of things, but we haven't necessarily said, yes, we're definitely looking into selling it.
So right now, the select board has not made a decision on selling it. And that would be something that I would suggest is a pretty significant decision that I think we would either want to or legally need to bring before annual town meeting in the spring. And so I think that if that's an option on the table, like for example, as Mr. Satchuk suggested, if we work out a deal with the Cohasset Drama Club to sell it and they can renovate it at a fraction of the price because they're a nonprofit, they're not the government, and they can get CPC funding. Then we come back to town meeting in April, and I'm just making this up as a hypothetical, but that, that could be a trajectory. The select board hasn't decided anything yet. But yes, as we sit here today, the town owns town hall. We do have repairs that are very substantial right now that we need to address and the cost is substantial because we're, we're the government and we have to comply with certain rules that a non-government entity would not need to. And so in terms of the exact number of repairs, is it 20 million? It's probably a little bit lower, but it's, it's probably fair to say that it's up there in the high teens.
So I'm, I, I thank you guys, by the way, I, I do, because you had a $26 million proposal in front of you and you just brought us a $10 million one. So you did listen. So I do thank you for that. So I, I guess what I would really love to hear from you, because you guys are all, you know, people who we voted for and we elected to put here. You mentioned putting it on the ballot, but I, I heard some lady back there who was talking about previously how they always said they were going to sell it and then they continue to move around buildings. And now it's still a liability to me as a taxpayer. So can we get some type of commitment from you guys that us as a town will definitely have the decision making, whether it's on the ballot or whether it's in a place like this, we will have the decision making process or decision making ability, I should say, in order for us to actually sell the town hall and help finance this $10 million and the other projects like the school? Because that's $20 million before the school, which as somebody with young kids, unacceptable that again, we're here talking about bureaucrats before our children.
So I'm looking at our town council and I think we can confirm unambiguously that any spending has to go before town meeting through, for example, the capital stabilization fund. And I believe, and just nod Carolyn, if this is correct, I believe the disposition of property also, yep, she's nodding yes. So any disposition would also need to go before town meeting as well. So people would have the opportunity to vote on that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got Mr. Chiddick and then the red sweater back there.
Okay. My name is Woody Chiddick, 98 South Main. I'm here simply as a citizen of the town. What I'm hearing is that this is a plan really not ready for prime time. We don't have a, a single phased plan for $10 million. We have a two or three phase plan, including either tearing down the annex or refurbishing it, certainly restoring the town hall. They, people may be coming back to us twice more. And I'm, don't know whether it's 20 million, whether it's 25 to 30 million. I'm not afraid to spend the money. I voted for, back in the spring town meeting, I voted for the spending of the town hall. I voted for the spending of the town hall, which was rejected. So it isn't that I'm I'm afraid to spend money, but I hate to spend money when a number of options have not been put on the table and adequately studied. Because that to my mind is basically irresponsible. So I would like to recommend to my fellows, citizens here to basically turn this down for the time being and do a thorough study of of options. And it may be repair, it may be raise and rebuild. I don't know. I honestly don't know what the right option is. All I know is that there are options out there that are not before us tonight. And I get very concerned. And the concern I also have about One Pleasant Street is that rather than that giving us options, it's starting to take away options. If we buy One Pleasant, you're going to, there are going to be a lot of ancillary options and benefits that go out the window because now we have a new town hall. It may be too small, as Jackie Dormitzer said. It may not be purpose built, but we will have to live with it. So I for one am prepared at some point to vote for a new town hall or improvements. As many as make sense, I'd be delighted. But I don't think this is this is it.
Thank you. I've got the red sweater and then I've got Mr. Hillman behind me. And then I've got there and Ms. Jenkins.
Okay, the red sweater is Steve Sullivan, 59, 59 Chittenden Lane. I have three items. First is just a follow up on some of the discussion about the purchase price and then renovation for the existing town hall. So we're not talking about spending 10 million for the purchase and 20 million. I heard 20 million just thrown around the past conversation. I assume whatever we would want to do to get the town hall for other use will be much less than 20 million. Do we have any, is there any thoughts on that?
So to be clear, this warrant article and the special election ballot vote is to purchase just One Pleasant Street. There's no money being allocated for the existing town hall. We have a PNS signed with the developer for 9.1 million. And that PNS, incidentally, is time limited. So if we don't take this, it's not like someone in the commercial market just sits there and waits for us to go through years of study committees. They have obligations on their end too. And so this is the time limited aspect. It's limited by this meeting and this special election. And then the developer is free to go if it fails. So that's that's as to the 9.1 million. And then the additional costs are to really just relocate the existing fixtures from town hall, from the existing town hall, you know, doing the its moving costs plus renovation in terms of there's a vault that we need to install because that's not like a typical office, office material. And so we do expect it probably to be less than 10 million, if not substantially less. But we're erring on the side of caution just because we know when the government buys things, it gets very expensive. And as to your question about the 20 million for the existing town hall, again, we're not putting any numbers before you right now as to what we plan to do or repairs we need to make. The only thing that's been voted on tonight previously was $500,000 into the capital stabilization fund.
Thank you. How was, I don't know if I read it anyway, I couldn't see it. How was the 9.1 million purchase price arrived at?
And so do you have other questions? Could you ask them all at once?
And so how is the nine, and I, my other question was actually, how long do we have for this opportunity for the PNS? When does that expire?
It expires tonight if you don't vote on it.
I like we're being threatened on that.
Well, it's just the reality of, you know, having a building subject to a successful vote at town meeting. That is our obligation that, you know, to lock in this price and this opportunity. And the purchase price was a subject of negotiation and market analysis.
Thank you. Mr. Hillman?
Very briefly, a couple of points. The point about the Historic Society building in the old Pratt Library, there's a, there's a detail missing. The Historic Society bought the Pratt Library. The Historic Society sold the house next to St. Anthony's. So the money from St. Anthony's funded the Historic Society, funded the library, funded the new school. That wasn't a freebie. The people who bought that house have installed a very spiffy pool. In fact, I'm jealous. We're talking about building a public or acquiring a public building that will produce an income stream. Find me another project that we've ever talked about where we're going to acquire and open a public building that will generate an income stream. An income stream, I'm old enough to remember when $2,000 in rent was not regarded as moderate in any way. This is a very significant part of this project. Another very significant part of this project is acquiring land and building on it as a public body is unspeakably expensive. It is way more than buying a private privately bought constructed building. There were concerns, are we even allowed to do this? Town council assures us that we are because it was already built when we bought it. We didn't, it was already built when we bought it. So we were able to pick up the economies of private construction by buying a building that was ready to go when it was offered to us. Lastly, probably lastly, I've lived here for 32 years. A lot of people here have been here longer. I've been to just about every town meeting. A lot of people who are in this room have been to more. But we all have seen missed opportunities. We all watched, you know, those of us who are here for the construction of the sewer system, which could have been built 10 years before or way less money, but it wasn't. We were here for schools that were delayed. We were here for road projects that were delayed. We, I work in for a lot of public sector entities. I walked into buildings and there are big plaques that say, who built this building and when? It's almost as if we're building ourselves a plaque of all the opportunities we've missed. No one's making any more land in Cohasset. If they were, I'd be I'd be investing in that company, but they're not. To the point of let's put this on the shelf and study it and do it some more. We're going to be studying nothing. There will not be a building to study. There will be just another missed opportunity and another expense. This is a bargain. We should take it. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got the woman in the white sweater.
Jane Gerdic of 56 North Main Street. I'm not going to opine on the on One Pleasant Street. My concern is the town hall on the common. I am a member of the Common Historic District Commission. And I was just jokingly thinking, maybe we could sell it to Walgreens. You know, this is a town historic common, which has made our town famous. And we need to be very careful when we think about trying to make money selling that building. We have to think long and hard about what uses we want there, what we want it to look like. And I think we need to maintain control so that we can have those choices.
Thank you. Ms. Jenkins?
Leonora Jenkins, Jerusalem Road. Buying this building, we now become landlords. And we have discussed lack of maintenance. We, I think there is only one elevator in the back of this building to make it accessible. And knowing what it's like in landlord realm, what is our liability when something happens and one of our tenants says, I know what my rights are? How much are we liable for?
Thank you. Next, I had Mr. Pease.
Sam Pease, 3 Sankey Road. I'd like to call a question, please.
Okay, the motion has been made to call the question. It's not debatable. We vote on it immediately. It does require two thirds vote for adoption. If it passes, then we're not voting on this subsequent question. If it passes, then we will vote on the main motion. If it doesn't pass, we will continue to debate. Does everybody understand that procedural? All right, the motion has been made to call the question, which is to stop debate. All those in favor of stopping debate, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion passes by the requisite two thirds vote. So we now will move to voting on the main motion. This is the main motion under Article Five. Town hall does require two thirds vote for adoption. So we're now voting on the main motion. All those in favor of the main motion under Article Five, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. That's too close to call. I'm going to ask the tellers. You don't need to put your hands up yet. I'm going to ask the tellers to take the stations. Are you guys able to count these bleachers or should we ask? Okay. Who has this side? Okay, and Michael, where are you counting? Okay. You guys all set? All right, all those in favor, please hold the pink slips up in the air. Please keep them there. I know your arm's going to get tired, but we got, our counters have a lot of counting to do. Keep them up, please. And then Jane, you're getting up here too. Jane, you're getting up here also. Who's, okay, who's doing that? Okay. In the front, keep them up. Susan's getting you. Okay, tellers, everybody good? Skay, you good? Okay, you can put, a's, yeses can put your hands down. Okay. Give the tellers a few seconds to get back to stations. Okay, all those opposed, please hold your pink slips up in the air, please. Can you to hold them up, please? Okay, if you have, tell us if you have anybody, you can come and give me your papers. Okay, the tat, the count is in favor, 289. Opposed, 135. That does exceed two thirds, so the motion does pass. Thank you for your patience with the hand ballot. We'll proceed to the motion under Article Six, Community Preservation Committee. They have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting. Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. It does require two thirds vote for adoption. For the Community Preservation Committee, I'll recognize Mr. Tom Wearden.
Good evening. On the, on behalf of CPC, I would like to present three motions tonight.
So I just to clarify, Tom, it's one motion.
Okay, the support, it's in the form of one motion, three elements. That there was a fourth that was in the warrant, but which called for support for affordable housing at One Pleasant Street, but that motion has been withdrawn. The first item provides for $8,000 for historic preservation at Paul Pratt Library. This is to fund cabinets that will house historic documents. 20 years ago, the library installed four cherry wood cabinets to store historical items and documents. This proposal will provide additional cabinet storage space for these materials. The second item provides an allocation of 8,000, $87,878 from the Community Housing Reserve to the Cohasset Housing Authority. And that's for restoration of housing units at 60 Elm Street. This 50 year old project requires periodic preservation of its 64 units in 16 buildings and houses, two buildings with 12 spaces for group living. The final elm calls for CPC to float a 10 year bond to provide $2 million for significant preservation of existing recreation facilities. They include the Beechwood Playground, the Bancroft Road Tennis Courts and a new sports wall on Sawyer Street. The debt service will be paid from future CPC results and receipts, rather, and will absorb about half of our annual cash flow. But that proportion will recede each year as the bond is paid down. Select Board Member Chris Plex will speak further to that issue.
Thank you. For the select board, I'll recognize Mr. Chris Plex.
Mr. Moderator, I believe we have a video?
Yes, we do have a video.
The town of Cohasset is proud to announce Phase One of the Courts and Playground Project for Special Town Meeting 2023.
Hi, this is Chris Plex from your Cohasset Select Board. This fall at Special Town Meeting, we'll be asking for your support for a number of community investments that we think will benefit all of us. community investments that we think will benefit all of us.
It satisfies the needs of the entire community.
And that investment starts with broad support from the Cohasset Select Board. The project will rebuild the Millikan tennis courts and will eliminate safety hazards for both kids and adult use. Right now, the Millikan tennis courts are falling apart with large cracks and weeds growing through the surface.
I'm here at the tennis courts at Millikan Field, where if you've tried to play pickleball or tennis lately, you've seen the cracks in the courts and the crumbling retaining walls.
These original two courts are from 1959, and then the four courts on the far end are from 1999, so they're overdue for renovation.
But don't just take it from Select Board Member Chris Plex and Recreation Director Ted Carroll. Just ask former Cohasset tennis standout, turned tennis pro Emma Davis, who achieved a career high of 670 in the world on the WTA Tour.
When I played there, it was, they were starting to crack, there was, you know, the weeds starting to grow. Again, obviously, a tennis court to me was a tennis court, they had a net, I could hit the ball, like, it was fine, it wasn't putting me in danger or anything. But it does, you know, over time, they, they need to be resurfaced, and I can't even imagine how long it's been.
Davis, who now coaches tennis at Yale, says it's important to resurface a court not only for the look, but also for safety.
You can just tell from like the look of a court, like when they start to crack and stuff. Again, sometimes small cracks, like not a big deal, but as they get bigger, like your toe can go in, you can trip.
The proposed project also includes a sports wall behind the library on Sawyer Street. It also brings the Beechwood Playground into ADA compliance. After an analysis in 2022 and extensive discussions with the public, a plan was crafted to help turn ideas into reality.
I think it's a really practical approach. The study has been really comprehensive and thorough, and prioritized what's needed most in short order, i.e. the tennis courts that we happen to be standing on today.
Public feedback that we got on a couple of the early plans kind of led us to go back to the drawing board and kind of figure out, okay, this is what the community wants right now.
The Millikan tennis courts and the retaining wall will cost 1.5 million. The new Beechwood Playground will cost $350,000, and the installation of a sports wall will cost $100,000. The funding would come from the Community Preservation Committee. Let's continue to work together to invest in our community, so Cohasset continues to flourish for years to come.
It's a big deal, because, listen, it's time to reinvest back into the community.
Cohasset's such a beautiful place, and then you go to see the courts and to see that, to see this beautiful town and then have tennis courts like that. I do think, again, tennis is a game that the whole community can play, whether you're 80 years old, whether you're five years old, like you play it for your whole life.
Playground for younger kids, throwing the sport wall for kids that play racket sports or certain types of sports. It's all about the community and having an option for the community to get out and enjoy beautiful facilities in a beautiful town.
If you have any questions, please come out to one of our community meetings or reach out directly to one of your Select Board members. We want to make sure we're making the right investments for Cohasset.
Thank you. So if you've been around any of these facilities, you're probably well aware of the need for some investments. Beechwood community has been working for years to get their well-loved playground updated, and the tennis courts, as you could see in the video, are quite actually crumbling. And these courts are used by a lot more than just tennis players, so please consider that when you're voting tonight. And lastly, that sports wall is great for lacrosse, but if you've been out to Situate and seen their sports wall near their sports complex, it's a magnet for all sorts of different kinds of sports, and it gets very well-used. So I'll keep my comments brief tonight, but lastly, I just want to make sure I thank Tom Riordan and the Community Preservation Committee for providing the funding for these projects.
Thank you. The Advisory Committee has recommended approval of the motion under Article Six by a vote of eight to zero. Is there discussion? Mr. Jenkins?
Leland Jenkins, Jerusalem Road. Quick question. If the town meeting voted down CPC in the future, who is liable for the funds?
So until the bond would be paid off, the CPC couldn't go away. So the, at least enough funding to pay for the debt would have to remain. Or it would revert back to the taxpayers.
Is there further discussion?
Fred Buffam, 43 Sur Drive, also a former coach for the tennis team here. Just have a question regarding the court refurbishments. Are you using asphalt base for the new courts or a concrete base? Because the cost differential is quite different between those two things.
The intention is to use concrete. That's the proposal.
That is, that is the most expensive way you can do a hard court. I know it will last longer, but was there a discussion about the two options, asphalt versus concrete, and a calculation made on that?
Concrete was chosen because it's a longer-lasting material.
Thank you.
Russell Benetti, 20 Parker Ave. A question on the sports wall. Initially, that was showing that it was going to have a astroturf or some artificial turf involved with that. I was wondering if that's still the case. And also, it's my understanding that if the CPA were to be rescinded, that the money left would be used to retire any bonds, and anything left after that would become the town's obligation. Is that your understanding as well?
I understand the question correctly. It's about the balance of funding that would be required for the astroturf, and the astroturf would be funded by a combination of grants and community fundraising.
And the second part of my question about what happens if the CPA goes away?
The town has the liability if the CPA goes away.
Okay.
Yes.
My name is Mary Jo Larson. I live 12 Virginia Lane. Actually, we moved here about 15 years ago. I used to play tennis all the time. Shortly after I moved here, I tried playing tennis on those courts, and I injured my knee. It's, the cracks are everywhere, so it's, it's not just a matter of aesthetics. It really is a liability to leave them that way. I, I've been afraid to go on the, those courts since. I think my knee has healed, so I really hope you vote yes to support the tennis courts. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Sir?
Jeff Grossman, 24 Howe Road. I'm the current tennis coach at the Cohasset High School. I succeeded a very successful coach, Fred Buffam. I don't know all of the costs. I do know the courts are unacceptable. Other teams come here to play us. They don't even want to play. Eventually, we'll have to play the state tournament, according to former athletic director Ron Ford, because people will not agree to play on these courts. You can get hurt on them. There's ridges in them, holes in them. It's completely unacceptable. I mean, I moved here 32 years ago. I moved from Westport, Connecticut, that had manicured 30 clay courts. I came here, I could not believe that Cohasset had courts with grass growing in the lines. It's, it's horrible. I also run the tennis and pickleball for the Cohasset Recreation Program. I'm out there with little kids. I couldn't have them on half of those courts. It's unacceptable. So I hope, and I encourage people to vote for approving this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion, particularly with new points? We'll proceed to a voice vote. Motion under Article Six that does require two thirds vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article Six, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion passes with the requisite two thirds vote. Article Seven, Police Station and Fire Satellite Station. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. It does require a two thirds vote for adoption. I'll recognize for the Select Board, Chris Plex, and who he will be preceded by a video. So if we could cue the video.
Hello, everyone. My name's Chief William Quigley of the Cohasset Police Department. I'm here today to talk to you about the state of the police station. As people may know, the current station we're working out of on Elm Street, 62 Elm Street, was built in 1961, 61 and 62. By all accounts, it was, it was going to be state-of-the-art, it was built for the next 50 years. Well, it's made it. It's made it 50 years and then some. We're constantly running from the police station here on Elm Street through the village, which is very, very congested, trying to get up to 3A where the, where the call volume is. And, you know, there's, there's more than one occasion that we get caught at the railroad tracks, that the town is, would, would, would cut off for probably 60 seconds sometimes. We've maximized what we can use inside the building. We've even taken out garage bays, and now we've moved outside the actual building, we're putting up ancillary structures.
Hi, my name is Sergeant Patrick Ridden, and I am the Treasurer Secretary of the Cohasset Police Union. Well, to start with, one of the main issues that we have that affect the public is our cell block is extremely outdated. We don't have running water in there, it's outside of the toilets, it's, it's old, outdated, and consistently fails state inspection. We're tripping over each other when it comes to writing reports, we're all in the same room. Our break room is also our interview room. It's where we interview witnesses of crime, you know, victims of crimes, witnesses, we hold juveniles. That's where we also have our training area. Oh, one that, 35 King Street would be amazing. The, the building is perfectly located.
Number one, it's, it's the location. It's a perfect location for a police station. It's, you know, great visibility, it gives us good accessibility to where our call volume is, you know, most of our calls are on 3A. So it's good access, there's good visibility, and it, it, it just provides better access to all parts of town from 3A.
Hello. My name is John Dock, and I'm the Fire Chief of the Cohasset Fire Department. Right now, the commuter rail cuts the town in half. So at times, when we're responding from down here at Elm Street to up to the 3A corridor off to Beechwood, we may be stopped and delayed an additional 30 to one, 30 seconds to one minute, and waiting for that train to come through their crossings, whether it be at Sawyer Street, Bond Street, Pleasant Street, Beechwood Street, or even Lower King Street. Adding a second station up to 135 King Street would greatly reduce our response times and greatly serve the community.
When there's an emergency and we need to coordinate and have constant communications, a lot of times face-to-face with other department heads, it's best if we're in a, in one of the buildings where the police or fire are responding from. We have easier access to the computer capabilities, easier access to the communications and radios, and it just is, we're, we're an island out here by ourselves now, and we don't have a backup location for emergency operations. We think that 135 King Street could possibly be that for us.
And I ask the voters, the tonics of Cohasset, to support 135 King Street.
We're asking that the town support a move for us, a move to 135 King Street. 3A is where we should be, and that's going to help us continue being a professional and modern police department. Thank you.
Hello again. As you heard from Chief Quigley and Chief Dockray, our existing police and fire station on Elm Street has served us well, but it's also well past its prime. What we are proposing tonight is a cost-effective investment in our community, and I want to emphasize a theme that you're hearing tonight, which is cost-effectiveness. That was a very clear theme in the last town meeting, and we're trying to be very responsive to that. For a comparison, Hingham's Public Safety Building that's under construction now near the shipyard is priced at nearly four to five times what our proposal is. Hingham decided that's the right plan for them, but we're proposing a lower-cost option for Cohasset. And that's in large part due to something that was discussed earlier when we were talking about Town Hall, and that's the difference between public and private construction costs. It's an existing structure we are proposing to buy and then do renovations on at a lower cost. We're making this proposal because we have real needs today. Our police need compliant holding cells, interview rooms, and space to do their work. Our firefighters need space for proper decontamination of their equipment after calls, dedicated space for female firefighters, and space for the regular training that our firefighters need to stay prepared to serve our community. Those are the needs. We will also gain a more central dispatch point for faster response times, co-location of emergency management with police and fire, and the use of the second ambulance that the town already owns. This is a cost-effective solution to address immediate needs, and it also brings benefits that will improve our first responder's ability to serve the community. I hope we have your support for this investment.
Thank you. For the Advisory Committee, I'll recognize Mike Barkley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Barkley, on behalf of the Advisory Committee. The video really tells the story. There's no lies in that. You ever had the chance to visit the police and fire station voluntarily, of course? You walk in the door, and you really are back in the 1960s. I've spent some time in there, visiting with the chiefs as the liaison, and, you know, the conference room, you walk in, it's a single-purpose conference room. They're interviewing, doing the important work of interviewing people. There's a lot of changes, not only in the nature of crime, but also in the requirements, the public, the public disclosure requirements around gathering data, storing that data, having it in a form that can be used by the courts. These are all game changers, and, you know, the police department is doing its best. You walk into that conference room, and, you know, you know, they're, it's bare bones. They're, they're stringing together the equipment needed to comply with ever-increasing difficult criteria to do their job. There are times when officers have to eat their lunch in the cruiser because there might be some, be a interview going on in that room. You walk around to the back, and the locker rooms are subpar, the cells are out of compliance, and this is just not the way the people who keep us safe should be operating. They deserve more, and frankly, they need more. This isn't something that they're asking for any extras, this is something that they, they really need. You know, as far as the fire department goes, the, the 3A corridor, this is, this is for public safety, Ben, sort of a, a vision that's been in place for decades. The, the need for a 3A presence to improve the response times across the entire town is something that I think goes back 40 years, perhaps, when the, the piece of property we're stopping shop was for sale, and it was contemplated that maybe a, a public safety facility could go there. Just in terms of, you know, for fire and emergency, the, the national standard response time for emergency incidences is four to six minutes. You, you saw the video with the train and the tracks, and, you know, there have been incidences over the last year where the response times, because of that, have been seven, eight-plus minutes. And I think we can all agree that, you know, when, when we need help, and these are the people who are always there to help us, four minutes sounds a whole lot better than eight minutes. And the presence on 3A, it will help with North Cohasset, it will help with far reaches of Beechwood. All of our schools are on that side of the public, of the, of the train tracks, and, and this is just something that is long overdue. And, you know, as it was referred to earlier, these types of opportunities to buy a piece of property where the building has already been erected, is a huge time and cost save. We're getting this building, it's 1.8 acres with a 14,000-square-foot building for 2.4 million. The, the ask tonight for 10.4 envisions another 8 million to, to basically retrofit the, the location to serve the needs of the fire and police. The, you know, I've, I've had the, you know, the privilege of working with both the chiefs over the last couple of years on both the operating and capital budgets, and these are not the type of people who are going to ask for the Cadillac when the Honda's going to do the job. I've actually found myself prompting them at times to, to-
Just a time check, you're at four minutes.
Okay, yep, just to, you know, prompting them to, you know, if they're really asking for enough. A couple of just questions that I know have come up. Will this new building mean more personnel? Well, I met with the chiefs last Friday, asked them this question point-blank, they didn't hesitate, no. Is this the right facility? Is this the right facility? They did not hesitate. This is the right facility. And they're the experts. They're the ones who know best what they need and whether or not this is going to do the job. So, you know, to me, you know, when I think about public safety, I think it's like going in for surgery. You get wheeled into that operating room and you want your surgeon to be well-trained. Want them to have the best equipment possible. And, you know, these are the people where minutes and seconds matter, and they don't have much room for error. We need to bring them into the twenty-first century. This building will allow that to happen. So I hope you'll vote yes tonight on this article and on Saturday at the polls. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, for the Capital Budget Committee, Brian Host.
Mr. Barkley, you're very tall. The strategic rationale for this project has been extremely well articulated, so I will not go back over it. The one point of redundancy is that Capital Budget also asked the same two questions uh, of the chiefs. Uh, will this new location require additional headcount? The answer was similarly no. And is this the right location? And emphatically, that was yes. In addition, I'd like to thank um, the Assistant Town Manager and the Town Manager for bringing forth what is truly a creative and cost-effective solution to a very real need. The accelerated nature of this is a little bit unique for us at Capital. Um, there is an expectation by the taxpayers that we will go very deep in projects. And so when things come at us very quickly, um, we still have to do the same amount of work in, in a compressed amount of time. So it's made for some um, interesting meetings for anyone that watched. On this, on this one in particular, we would typically have architectural plans, fairly detailed cost estimates before signing on to an expenditure of, of this magnitude. Given the nature of the acquisition and the timeline, it's just not available. So we've had extensive conversations, uh, really trying to understand if there is a clear vision, a clear layout that people have in mind, and a clear understanding of what the cost will be. And we are comfortable that that work has been done, um, at least in terms of thinking through it. Uh, but in terms of paper plans, we don't have them, and this is obviously a source of discomfort. Or at least new territory for us. Um, and the result of that is that ultimately four people did vote in favor of this project. I think, you know, a- all with that issue in mind and, and simply an ability to um, to go past it. Um, and there was one abstention, uh, based on the exact same, same concern. But again, the strategic rationale of this project is, I think unanimously understood.
Thank you. Is there discussion? Mr. Donahue.
Hi, John Donahue through Ledger Drive. Uh, my only question is regarding the satellite characteristic of the fire station. Given the space of the building, and I understand it would present the prior question, right? We still have the railroad tracks, but has there been thought of perhaps, you know, returning that, the space of the joint facility that currently exists to the, you know, to the tax rolls as a, you know, a regular piece of property by, you know, selling it and then moving both op departments in totality to the new building?
I think Mr. Plex will respond to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I think the critical issue being addressed here is one of space. So we're gaining space to accommodate the needs of both the police and fire department. The fire department would move to occupy the rest of Elm Street that is currently occupied by the police department. And I think you were also asking about the staffing of the fire department over at the satellite location. The satellite location would be staffed by the fire department, and I'm looking for nods from the chief during the day. But at night, staffing would be provided by the existing fire department on Elm Street, and that's intended to improve the response times.
Uh, uh, okay. And I guess last question would be, has there been use or consideration of moving the whole fire department rather than making a satellite, making it the sole station?
The space wouldn't accommodate all of that on the one lot.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, um, Ruth Steele from four fifteen Whitney Woods Lane. Um, I think there's an opportunity here, um, that may, that hasn't been discussed certainly, and that is about the flow of traffic on the three A. Presumably, if we're going to put a safety complex there, there will be a need for a change in the access, uh, and exit from that property. And that property will access the three A as discussed, which is a state highway, as we know. And every time it gets brought up at this meeting to change the safety or improve the safety of walking along the side of the three A to access the um, the properties in the um, previously known Avalon uh, complex, or to access the um, the shops and restaurants, et cetera, along the other side. Um, we are told that it's very difficult to cooperate with the state to uh, change the use of the road there. Um, it seems to me that, um, this is a wonderful uh, project, and everyone's talking about the building use, but I think there's an opportunity to look at the traffic flow use on the three A and to work with the state to improve that section of uh, the road, which we know is very accident prone, and there is many accidents happening there. There will need to be a light there presumably for the exit from that property of the fire truck or the ambulance. So I think there's an opportunity that shouldn't be missed to look at the uh, the use of the road in that area.
Thank you. Ms. McGuire.
Kathy McGuire, Tapala Road. You talk about response times. There's already two sector cars. There's running, there runs on the highway, there runs, runs on the shore. There shouldn't have to be any controversy about the railroad tracks and response times when they're traveling from two different locations. So I don't know how putting the police station up on three A is going to change the response times. They say Quicket or Beechwood area. Well, now what's going to happen to everybody down on the harbor? You just change on the direction. The other thing is you put an ambulance and an engine up on three A. That ambulance is not going to be manned twenty-four seven from my understanding. It's only going to be on a box callback. So there's not going to be extra manpower, which is still going to be the same numbers and the same response time, just from a different location. Traffic, you're going to put up one of those uh, attenuator lights, the traffic with the cycle with the lights? He's got a truck heading north with a full load on. Somebody's pulling into Mary Lou's or a cruiser coming out or an ambulance. They're still not going to be at a stop in time. You just had a near fatal accident, what, last week? I think they need to rethink this.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes. Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. William Quigley, the police chief. Just for a point of clarification, um, the last speaker talked about uh, two sectors, the shore sector and the highway sector. We did away with that in two thousand and eleven.
Is there further discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. It does require two-thirds vote for adoption. The motion under Article seven signify by saying nay. The motion passes with the requisite two-thirds vote. Uh, Article eight, Roads and Siwats Special Purpose Stabilization Fund. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. It does require two-thirds vote for adoption. For the Select Board, we'll have a video and then Paul Grady.
Hello, my name is Jay Pimpare, and I'm the Chairperson of the Sidewalk Safety and Connectivity Committee in the town of Cohasset. Early this year, the Select Board created and charged our committee with identifying roadways and sidewalks that are in need of repair, as well as identifying areas of town where sidewalks currently do not exist, but could definitely benefit the ones. As we evaluate our immediate infrastructure needs, we are also identifying areas where safety measures such as bike paths, bike lanes, and added crosswalks could be installed. You will see more of these safety measures incorporated into the Elm Street paving project. We've been busy, and the first project we initiated was the paving of Doane Street from the Town of Situate line down along the Beechwood Playground. Work is just beginning.
My name is Paul Grady, and currently it is my honor to serve as Vice Chair of the Cohasset Select Board. The Cohasset Select Board has introduced a Roads and Stabilizations Fund that we are asking you to support in November. For too long, maintenance has been deferred and too many cans have been kicked down the road. And this has an effect on pedestrians, it has an effect on traffic, vehicle and otherwise. It also has an effect on our property values. And primarily though, it's safety. It's getting something back that we've lost a long time ago. With an annual stabilization fund, what we were able to do is set up concentric twenty-year road and paving plan, which will also incorporate sidewalks, safety measures, and will improve the life of people coming in town, our residents, our kids. Thank you again, Cohasset.
Hi, my name is Julie Rollins, and I am the Vice Chair of the Sidewalk Safety and Connectivity Committee. Due to a lack of yearly funding for our roadways and sidewalks, we as a town are in an unfortunate position of playing catch-up to repave or repair surfaces that are long overdue. Creating a stabilization fund will allow us to successfully manage repairs and improvements that need to be made today and put us in a strong position for future years. Together, we can do better, Cohasset.
Hi, my name is Brian Joyce. I'm the Director of Public Works for the town of Cohasset. Here to talk to you about the roads and sidewalks. So we have thirty-seven miles of public road in town, and we're on a schedule to pave those about every twenty years. So minimum of every twenty years, you want to have your road resurfaced. Um, that equates to one point eight five miles of road per year. The cost of goods and services we all know has gone up. The cost of, of paving that one point eight five miles of road per year has gone up significantly. We've had an increased degradation of roads that were paved on large projects in town. We have a lot of infrastructure in front of us that we need to upgrade. So this year, we have paved Doane Street, a piece of Church Street. We're in the process of paving Smith Place, a piece of Cushing Road, Margin Street, a piece of Atlantic Avenue going up to Whitehead and Elm Street, along with the sidewalks on both sides of Elm Street. Next year, we are slated to pave Beechwood Street, Pond Street from Route three A up past the high school driveway, and South Main Street from the Village all the way to the Situate Line is on the dock. Without the funding, we won't be able to meet our needs, and we won't be able to stay on our current twenty-year cycle. Every single person that crosses the border into Cohasset uses our transportation system and relies on our roads and sidewalks. I encourage you to join me in supporting this additional funding. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm not going to try to top that, so I'm going to be brief. Um, working with the DPW, recently created Roads, Sidewalks and Safety Committee, and in taking heart the input from our residents being on one four three commentary requests of the Select Board has unanimously voted to approve an eight hundred thousand dollars stabilization fund in order to finally address the long outstanding infrastructural needs that remain unattended. Hopefully upon passage tonight and at the ballot, this fund will enable us to finally launch Cohasset onto a twenty-year, if not less, maintenance, repair, and replacement cycle while freeing up three hundred thousand dollars in the Capital Stabilization Fund to address other outstanding potentially deferred capital needs. We hope that the town supports this long overdue initiative and also votes yes to the ballot on Saturday, and thank you very much.
Thank you. For the Advisory Committee, Rob Hillman. Oh, I'm sorry, Fran Collins.
Hi, I'm Fran Collins, four oh four South Main Street. Um, a good deal of what I was going to talk to you about tonight has already been said, so I won't bore you with statistics again, but going back historically, Cohasset has always had good roads and good sidewalks. People have always remarked, gee, you do a great job keeping up with your roads. Recently, because of the increased costs of, of paving materials, of labor and, and equipment, the prices have gone sky-high. We haven't kept up with the funding. Chapter ninety, which is the funding that we receive from the state, has not kept up with the costs as well. Um, in order to get our roads back into the condition that we've always been used to seeing and driving on and riding on, um, we need to pass this this uh, extra eight hundred thousand dollars. And it'll probably be continuing for several years to come. If we're going to keep on trying to pave two miles of road a year or one point eight miles road a year, we're going to have to keep on doing this, but our roads really need the work. So I strongly urge you to vote yes, vote in favor of this. The Advisory Committee voted unanimously to support this issue, and I hope you do as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, for the Capital Budget Committee, Brian Host.
So the Capital Budget Committee has a split vote on this. Um, let me start with the areas of consensus. There was complete unanimous agreement that we absolutely must be, uh, and must stay on our current twenty-year paving cycle. And everyone needs to understand that that continues forever. We don't catch up and then it goes away. I mean, this is roughly a million dollars in spend, two hundred thousand coming from the state, eight hundred thousand coming from the town, um, plus cost escalation till the end of time. That's the reality of what we face as a, as a town. So there's consensus that we need to make that investment. There's also consensus that those numbers are, are real. There's been a very substantial increase in the cost of paving. Um, part of it is um, temporary in the sense that um, there was a, a pause in almost all paving activities during the pandemic, and now virtually every town is in catch-up mode. So there's a very high demand, uh, both for the services and the, and, and the, and the crews. Uh, and it will take a very long time for that to shake out and for prices to correct. Um, so this price spike is with us, and it's going to be with us for, for quite a while. The final point of, of consensus is that roads are absolutely fundamental. This is not discretionary. Um, it's, it's really sort of the highest priority for any town. Uh, and that's where some of the heated debate came up, um, at the Capital Budget Committee. Uh, there's concern that roads haven't been treated as a high priority. Um, we see and continue to see um, free cash going to discretionary items, whereas this one is non-discretionary. Um, we see headcount additions, uh, as opposed to monies going towards road, roads. And that's true on both sides, the town and the schools. Um, so that, that is a source of frustration. It was a source of intense debated capital budget. Um, the other concern uh, is with regards to the structure. Some of our members preferred to see uh, this fundamentally funded out of the levy, uh, and to find a way to, to make that happen. Um, whereas I think others recognize that some of the costs that we've built into our other budgets are probably not easy to uh, remove in order to make room for this. Uh, and the result ultimately was a split vote. Um, all those considerations unbalanced, uh, three in favor, two against.
Thank you. And for the Sidewalk Safety and Connectivity Committee, uh, Jay Pimpare.
Good evening. Jay Pimpare, seven thirteen Jerusalem Road. As mentioned, I'm the Chairperson of the Roads and Sidewalk Committee. Wasn't ready to speak tonight. I was only ready to just give the comments if somebody was against it, and hopefully nobody's against this. It's just kind of a no-brainer. Just to put this into perspective, uh, one mile of roadway costs five hundred thousand dollars to pave. Okay, we have thirty-seven miles of public roadway in the town of Cohasset. That means that we're only paving our road in front of your house once every thirty-seven years at this current rate. The life expectancy on roadway is fifteen years. So your roadway in front of your house, if the current funding mechanism stays in place, is going to exceed two and a half times its life expectancy. I don't know anything that we have that exceeds two and a half times our life expectancy. Um, well, maybe there's a few things. But if you want to continue to have potholes and bumps, et cetera, then vote no on the project. But if you want to have better roads and maintain and keep up to current standards, then vote yes. The projects that were posed in front of you, the only reason we're able to do Elm Street and some of the other roadways is for whatever reason, we had all this leftover pandemic money. We would never have been able to do that. Elm Street alone, that roadway was long, long overdue. It serves our emergency fire and police departments, et cetera. That was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's one and a half times the annual budget. If we didn't do that roadway this year, it would have got pushed off to twenty twenty-four and then into the twenty twenty-five budget. And all those other roadways that were mentioned, South Main Street, Beechwood, Pond And all those other roadways that were mentioned, South Main Street, Beechwood, Pond Street, those get kicked to twenty six, twenty seven and twenty eight. And I'll bet that ninety percent of the room doesn't live on any one of those roads. So your roadway is now into twenty thirty, twenty thirty one, twenty thirty two. Forget about all the cul-de-sacs like Linden and Fair Oaks and anything off of Beechwood, et cetera. You're talking twenty years before they get paved. So the money is needed. I vote, I request that you vote or recommend you vote yes for this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there discussion? Ms. Jenkins and then Mr. Dick.
Yes, Leonardo Jenkins, Jerusalem Road. I thought I just heard Mr. Grady say that it was three hundred thousand dollars that we had for paving and that we're going to get this eight hundred thousand dollars and that three hundred thousand dollars is going to go into another stabilization fund. Shouldn't we just use that three hundred thousand dollars and just put five hundred into it? Instead of starting another stabilization fund with that three hundred?
Mr. Dick.
Mike Dick, twenty seven Parker Avenue. I'm a member of the Capital Budget Committee. I was involved in all the discussions. What we have here is something of a misdirection to our town meeting. What we're voting on is not the need for the roads, which are clear and urgent. What we're voting on is something brand new. It's called a special purpose stabilization fund. This special stabilization fund is funded by a tax increase, a permanent tax increase of two and a half percent on this eight hundred thousand dollar number. We need to consider the necessity for such a stabilization fund and attendant tax increase. I feel, based on years in spending with the Advisory Committee and then with Capital Budget, that our leadership ought to be looking at how we allocate our overall budgets. When the Long Term Financial Working Group got started, one of the items that we had proposed was to take a look at how we divide up our town spending amongst the schools, amongst municipal government and amongst public safety. There is, I believe, an unwritten rule that the schools enjoy a certain percentage of approximately sixty nine percent versus thirty one percent in funding that comes out of new growth. If you look at your tax bills, you'll see that sixty five percent goes to the schools, twenty one goes to general government and fourteen goes to public safety. I think we need to relook at those proportions. I do feel that we can find and ought to find eight hundred thousand dollars out of the three hundred thousand that have been provided each year, plus a reallocation amongst the different departments. Now, it's easy for me to get up here and say this is what they should do. And I apologize to them for dumping it on them. But I do feel that the Long Range Planning or Financial Planning Group ought to be looking at this and ought to be helping us understand what a special purpose stabilization fund is. This special purpose stabilization fund, I'm sorry, was proposed by our Finance Director who has since left our town. We have gone through two Finance Directors in the last two fiscal years. Right now, that fiscal oversight is in the hands of our Town Manager, a very capable man, very capable government expert. But I feel that without a financial, Chief Financial Officer, there is no check or balance, that there isn't the kind of care, that's a bad word. There isn't the kind of oversight that might be needed here for a brand new way of raising taxes on a permanent basis. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dormitzer, I saw you were up. Would you just wanted to speak?
Ralph Dormitzer, one eleven Atlantic Ave, speaking as an individual. Just echoing what you've already heard, there was enormous frustration on the part of the Capital Budget Committee about not allocating adequate money for the roads. And that repeats what you've already heard. But in fact, when you think of the numbers, we have a fifty five million dollar budget this fiscal year. That's a lot of money. We can't even get an additional five hundred thousand dollars for the roads. It seems extraordinary that we have to make an off budget allocation to a special purpose stabilization fund that will continue indefinitely. And we therefore have this extra three hundred thousand we put in, gets to use for some other discretionary amount. So we are not even taking advantage of the money that's there and certainly not adding to it. It does not seem like a good way to actually fund anything is to make all of this part of the off budget obligation of the taxpayers. Just the wrong way to handle this whole thing. Sorry to be so negative on it. We want to do the roads and we are absolutely committed to doing it. We just don't think it's a good method to do it.
Thank you. Got the gentleman back there on the side.
Dear Tarpe, Bates Lane, I do support the stabilization fund as it's been described. However, I find the discussion is missing a critical element. The video and other people have mentioned that we have some thirty seven miles of public roads in the town. What is missing from the discussion thus far is that we have fourteen miles of what is termed private ways. I live on a private way. Didn't know that till somewhat recently. It looks like a street anywhere in Cohasset. The stabilization fund is the first direct tax for road maintenance. Up until this time, road maintenance has been funded indirectly through state grants and other funding sources. And the problem with this, as it conceived right now, is that those of us who live on private ways, and some of you here live on private ways and don't know it, because it's a carefully held state secret. Yeah. Are going to be hit with a bill when it comes to pave your roads. In other words, the stabilization fund will pay for the paving of public roads. Those of us who live on private ways will pay this tax as well. But what comes to pave our streets, we have to pay out of pocket. It is fundamentally unfair. It's disparate treatment. And as the town moves to develop a cohesive plan and catch up with other towns in the area, I think that this needs to be addressed. We don't have thirty seven miles of public ways. We have fifty one miles of roadways in Cohasset. And all of us are going to pay the same tax. I don't know why I should have to pay for the paving of my street out of pocket when other people don't have to. This issue is not going away. The first comment I'm going to hear is that this was voted at town meeting several years ago. Yes, it was. It was voted in the last minutes of a town meeting when people's eyes were rolling back in their heads. It is bad public policy and it needs to be corrected. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got Mr. Hillman next.
Rob Hillman, twenty one Norfolk Road. I'm a member of the Advisory Committee and the Long Term Financial Planning Committee, but I speak in just on my, on my own behalf. This fund isn't a misdirection and nor is it a permanent tax increase, nor is it somehow guaranteed to generate a two and a half percent increase in each year. It's actually a really sophisticated version of an override. Ordinary override grows the pie by a certain amount of money and it does not guarantee that that growth goes to the purpose for which town meeting may show up and decide it goes for it. It becomes part of the general levy, is my understanding. This creates, it's not exactly a trust fund, but it's kind of a trust fund. And there are policies in place and there are purposes for it that restrict it to the roads. There are lots of features. They're in our report. You can read them. But one of them is that, you know, all of our taxes can go up as much as two and a half percent a year, including these if we decide to take them on, but they do not have to. And unlike other kinds of overrides, these special purpose funds, this one and then the one we'll be talking about shortly, have other interesting features. They can be turned off. They can be, the Select Board and Town Meeting can make decisions about how to apply the money. The Select Board and Town Meeting can make decisions about whether to terminate these funds. There is something called an underwrite. I'd never heard of an underwrite before, but you can take an override back. But it's really hard and it almost never happens. These things, the reason that we recommended these is that they're much more sophisticated than your average general override. And then lastly, in our kind of opening statement, we very carefully said that we are concerned that when you look within the general levy, one of the reasons to go outside and create additional money for streets and roads is because the increases in those costs are chasing other money around in the budget. And that is, you know, that becomes a zero sum game. If we've got a fifty two million dollar general budget, it's not really easy to find, you know, this kind of, we should be able to find five hundred thousand dollars in the budget. Let's half or a little bit less than half the annual budget of the Department of Public Works. There, it isn't that easy. So that's what this creates. We can decide not to do it. But there's a history of deferring maintenance as sort of the first pain point. And this avoids that, I think. And and it is not permanent. In fact, it's uniquely not permanent. Is it likely that we'll ever completely catch up with the needs of our roads and streets and sidewalks? No, probably not. But it, we do have an option at any point to turn this down. And lastly, these appropriations or the monies made available have to come before town meeting every year. So we all get a, you know, sort of a unique say. It's not buried in, you know, the Advisory Committee goes through the budget, all X thousand lines of it every year. It's not sort of in there. It's transparent. It's in there. But it's kind of hard to find. This will be a separate, much like when Capital Budget comes and says, here's how we'd like to apply the money. That's how it's going to be. This is uniquely transparent government spending. So it's all good. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got the gentleman there, please.
Rob Jeffers, eighteen Spring Street. Just a question. What would be the tax impact on the median household for this? Sorry if I missed that earlier.
The cost, Mr. Jeffers, is two hundred and ten dollars on a median assessed at a million dollar home.
A gentleman in the middle and then on the side.
Good evening. Tim Ridden, twenty Bates Lane. I'm a neighbor of Dan's and we moved to Bates Lane back in nineteen ninety eight. At the time, I didn't know that Bates Lane was not a public way. I was familiar with public ways, but I didn't know that when Bates Lane was built back in nineteen eighty three as a brand new neighborhood with twelve houses, the town did not accept Bates Lane as a public way. So it's remained not a private way because we have no HOAs and it's not a public way because the town back in nineteen eighty three did not accept a brand new road with a large cul-de-sac, sidewalk and granite curbs. We believe that was a mistake by the town. We are hoping tonight and Saturday, we can get this mistake corrected because all those lists of streets that that gentleman pointed out, Bates Lane has never been paved in forty years. In forty years, not once has it been paved. The town will patch it. This is a patch from two years ago when they plowed it. They'll plow it, they'll sand it and they'll patch it. And they've been doing that for forty years. And last, two years ago, this twenty by ten patch was plowed up because the whole cul-de-sac is all potholes. And so when he plowed it up, the DPW has been very good. I call them. Few months later, the spring comes around and they put in another patch and then another patch. So as if meeting came up, I reached out to Brian Joyce and he told us that the only way our road is going to be accepted is if you people here tonight accept it as a public way. The town management accepts it as a public way. And then the stabilization passes, then we can get eighty seven dollars, eighty seven thousand dollars to pave Bates Lane after forty years of paying the same tax rate that everybody here pays. Everybody here pays the same tax rate as the twelve people who live on Bates Lane. But the twelve people on Bates Lane have never in forty years had their road paved. So I think the tax rate that we've been paying for forty years could more than pay the eighty seven dollars, eighty seven thousand dollars for Bates Lane. Our only other option, according to Brian Joyce, was that each household would pay seven thousand dollars out of their own pocket. And then we would send it to the town. The town would spread that out through ten years. So we'll be able to pay an extra seven thousand dollars per year to get our town, to get our road paved. And at that point, the town may accept the road and may not after an inspection. So I would love to vote yes, just like I did tonight for ten million dollars for the police, ten million dollars for the town hall. But I'm just looking for eighty seven thousand dollars for Bates Lane. It's all I'm asking for. It's kind of like Shark Tank. Please invest eighty seven thousand dollars into Bates Lane and the twelve people that live there who have been paying taxes since nineteen eighty three and myself nineteen ninety eight would be very happy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
No, please.
I'm sorry, gentleman right here then.
Thank you, moderator. My name is Craig McClellan. I reside at Eight Rustic Drive. I move to question.
A motion has been made to move the question. It's not debatable. As you know from the prior discussion, it, if passes, it stops debate. It does require two thirds vote for adoption. What we're going to do is vote on the motion to move the question or stop debate. If that passes, we will then vote on the main motion. If it does not pass, we'll go back to continued discussion. Sir.
Can I just have to ask another question? Jeff Grossman from twenty four Howe Road and Mr. Reardon and other people that have talked about this, that's a really good point, that private roads.
I'm sorry, sir. Debate, we cannot discuss anything other than voting on the move to question, sir. Thank you. Please sit down.
All right, but
Please sit down. Thank you.
I'll sit down.
We're voting on the motion to move the question. All those in favor of stopping debate, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion is adopted by the requisite two thirds vote. We will move to vote on the main motion under Article eight. It does require two thirds vote for adoption. This is now the main motion. All those in favor of the motion under Article eight, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. That's too close to call. I'm going to ask the tellers to take their stations, please. Okay, all those in favor, please hold up your pink slips. Hold them up high so the tellers can see them, please. Please keep them up. Tellers are counting. Okay, every teller good? Okay, you can put your hands down for the yeses. Okay, all those opposed, all the noes, please hold your pink slip up in the air, please, really high. Keep it up high so they can see them. Okay, the tally is in favor, two hundred twenty seven, opposed eighty five. That is more than the requisite two thirds vote, so the motion passes. Again, two twenty seven to eighty five. We'll proceed to Article nine, School Special Purpose Stabilization Fund. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. It does require two thirds vote for adoption. Uh, for the select board, we're going to have a video and then Ellen Maher.
Ellen Maher, I'm on the Cohasset Select Board and I'm here at one forty three Pond Street, home of Cohasset Middle High School and the administrative offices for the Cohasset Public School District. I'd like to talk to you a little bit today about the stabilization fund we're putting on the town warrant for special town meeting on November thirteenth to fund school maintenance and repairs. This campus is about eighteen acres. The building itself is over two hundred and twenty thousand square feet. Combined with Deer Hill and Osgood, we're looking at over four hundred thousand square feet of teaching and learning space and over forty acres of land. Comprehensive study was done last year assessing all of the campuses, interior and exterior buildings and grounds. And it was determined that we have needs for roofs, windows, doors, mechanicals and other building maintenance and repairs. So we're asking you to support the warrant article at special town meeting for one point five million for school stabilization fund because after all, we're stewards of the town and it's our responsibility to take care of these buildings.
I'm Dr. Patrick Sullivan, Superintendent of Cohasset Public Schools. Well, I think it's going to be a wonderful, uh, development in our school facilities, particularly as we look at our facilities' needs and the upgrades that we need in our systems, our alarm systems, our flooring, our roofing, other HVAC and air condition needs. It's completely necessary from just a maintenance upgrade perspective. You know, the the school buildings, they do have natural wear and tear, systems need to be upgraded. Fourteen hundred students in the district who are traversing around our buildings. So for those of you who are watching and who have the ability to come out and support this initiative, I wholeheartedly support it and I thank you for really helping the students and the staff of course, public schools.
Hi, I'm Jake Ellis, the Assistant Director of Facilities for Town of Cohasset. We're going through the the roofing systems of all the schools and they've, they're all reached their useful life. A few years ago, we did implement a preventative maintenance program with a company that comes and inspects and does patchwork as needed, but they've all reached their useful life. One of our big ticket items coming up is the fire monitoring system at the high school. It's, it's twenty years old. It's, it's reached its expected lifespan. We're able to patch it and piece it together and keep it running, but it is definitely due to be replaced. It would, it would make our jobs a lot easier knowing that we're able to fund the things that are needed to be funded to keep the schools up and running.
Hello, my name is Lance Style and I'm the Chair of the Crassid School Committee. As you've seen from this video and from visiting our schools, our school facilities are aging and in need of capital improvements, as with anything that ages. This school stabilization fund is a responsible way to ensure that we're able to meet those increasing maintenance and development needs. And the truth of the matter is, for so long as we want to have our children in Cohasset go to school in buildings in Cohasset, we will have to pay those maintenance needs. So in some ways, the bills are already due. It's just figuring out whether we pay them thoughtfully, responsibly, and hopefully more cost effectively through this funding mechanism, or whether we are forced to defer maintenance until there's a crisis and make discreet requests for potentially larger sums of money in the future. This stabilization fund will allow the schools to look ahead and make appropriate plans regarding these aging facilities and also commute the impact of any necessary significant investments such as a renovation or perhaps a replacement. On behalf of the schools, I ask that you support the school stabilization fund. It will give us the resources to give our kids the schools that they deserve.
All person. Hi, I'm Ellen Maher, sixty three Old Pasture Road, and I'm on the Cohasset Select Board. This Cohasset Select Board by unanimous vote is recommending your approval for the adoption of Article nine, the School Special Purpose Stabilization Fund. This fund is pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter forty, Section five B, which is a mechanism that has been in place in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for over five years. So it's hardly a new device in terms of how to fund, um, projects and and needs within, um, a town. Renovations to Cohasset Middle and High School and the Deer Hill Elementary School occurred first in nineteen sixty six and then again in two thousand and one, and both having been built in the early nineteen fifties. The Joseph Osgood Elementary School is our newest school, having been built in nineteen ninety eight and it's now a quarter of a century old. As mentioned in the video, recent in-depth analysis, analysis and study is showing us that we have major needs of repair at all three campuses. And although grateful for the annual allocations from the Capital Budget Stabilization Fund for repairs and maintenance, technology, buses and furnitures, it's not enough to keep up with the needs of the buildings. Uh, with almost four hundred thousand square feet and forty acres, we've only been able to fund over the last six years about ten dollars per square foot in repairs and maintenance. Adoption of this fund will allow our facilities and school department to work collaboratively to refine the list of needs and be proactive. Allocations from this fund will follow our established process with review by the Advisory Committee, the Capital Budget Committee and the Select Board. And then finally, those recommendations will come to you at town meeting for final approval. We request your support and adoption of Article nine. Thank you.
Thank you. With the Advisory Committee, I recognize Jean Estino.
Good evening. I'm Jean Estino and I'm currently in my fourth year as a member of the Cohasset Advisory Committee. Our committee reviews all town budgets before they're presented to town meeting. And the full advisory committee has voted nine zero in favor to recommend Article nine, which is for the creation of a school special purpose stabilization fund. From two thousand and ten until two thousand and nineteen, I served on the Cohasset School Committee, which makes me uniquely qualified to correct the town split. It's sixty one schools, thirty nine towns. Um, during my time on the school committee, I was a loud voice for maintaining our school buildings. And over those nine years, we addressed numerous maintenance and safety issues in our buildings via yearly presentation of needs to the Capital Budget Committee. But as our buildings age, the time has come to address these needs a bit differently. As you've heard, our school district consists of four hundred thousand square feet of teaching and learning space on over forty acres of land. And as I'm sure you can imagine, something always needs to be repaired or replaced due to wear and tear or obsolescence. As our buildings have aged, those needs have evolved and ongoing comprehensive studies have been undertaken to assess building condition and systems. These studies have outlined the condition of roofs, windows, doors, et cetera, and have shown that many areas and systems have outlived their useful lives needing replacement and or updating. To this end, the proposed school stabilization fund is a new approach to the needs of school buildings in the district. The fund will address critical infrastructure, including the items noted above, as well as fire alarm and HVAC systems, floors, entryways and grounds, making safe buildings for our students. This initiative will be funded through an initial assessment of one point five million dollars into the fund voted via the ballot question at next week's town election. Future additions, reductions or pauses to the fund will be determined by the select board in the event of substantial changes, should circumstances determine a degree decrease to the funding level as a decrease to the funding level is appropriate. The median income home tax impact will be approximately four hundred dollars a year. Access to the fund will be closely regulated based on time sensitive maintenance needs in the district and following spending procedures per existing capital governance. We ask for your support of Article nine to provide for the maintenance needs of our school buildings and grounds, and we thank you for your support of this article.
Thank you. For the school committee, Lance Style.
Oh, I, uh, am only going to take sixty seconds. Uh, I was just going to come up here and point out the permanent temporary tarp. Uh, it is still there. Don't worry. It's just now permanently metal. So we still have the same sort of capital needs that we had in the spring. Uh, the issue is that we need real money for aging buildings. And we've talked about other funding mechanisms like our capital budget. Just perspective, in the past three years, the schools have requested a total of five point one million dollars to the standard capital budget process. We've received only two point three million. We are facing into a gulf of the non, no needs of tens of millions of dollars for these roofs, these windows, the, uh, building control systems. We need a new mechanism to fund these things. And the shortfall in capital budget is not because of the capital budget issue, it's just because the pie is not big enough to fund these aging buildings. So this is just, in my view, responsible planning. As I said in the video, these expenses aren't going to go away, go away if we vote no now. Uh, we will just come to you in a crisis capacity. So I hope you support this stabilization fund to give us the tools we need to make our schools where they should be.
Thank you. Uh, for the School Facilities Committee, Jason Earls.
Good evening. My name is Jason Ellis and I'm the Chair of the School Facilities Committee. Uh, this committee was tasked with evaluating all school buildings and to provide a report on the current conditions of Deer Hill, Osgood and the Middle High School. The committee interviewed, vetted and hired AI three, which was one of four firms to help us with the value, this evaluation. AI three provided this committee with a lengthy, in-depth report on all schools. Out of this report became a maintenance repair list for all schools. Facilities Committee took this report, met with the school committee, town facilities department and evaluated this report and came up with a priority list for these repairs. These repairs, which include all schools, will cost approximately over thirty million dollars. Some of these repairs include flooring, alarm systems, roofing, windows, sidewalks, HVAC and other condition needs. Fire safety systems, plumbing, electrical upgrades and repairs to other critical infrastructure needs. With the creation of the stabilization fund, we believe the benefits will be better learning environment for our students, safer and better functioning buildings, catch up, catch up on deferred maintenance, address our major systems before critical failures and extend the useful life of the buildings and their components. I hope you vote yes on the stabilization fund so we can begin the process of much needed repairs to one of our town's major assets, our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. For the Capital Budget Committee, Brian Host.
So capital budget, um, again, has a split vote and I want to clarify that, um, as with roads, the focus of that debate really focused around or centered around the structure and not the need. Um, the need is absolutely apparent. Um, maintenance of our schools like roads, it's fundamental. It's nondiscretionary, um, and it's subject to a step function increase, albeit for different reasons. Um, before I get into that, I want to step back and put this all in perspective. Um, we heard a video that that put our square footage at four hundred thousand square feet between the three buildings. We heard from the Chair of the Advisory Committee earlier tonight, um, the public sector construction costs are unspeakable. Um, I think to put the need in maintenance in perspective, we have to speak the unspeakable. The replacement cost of these buildings is roughly a thousand dollars per square foot between the hard costs and the soft costs, which includes the architecture, the OPM contingencies and everything else. It's, it's a massive cost. It's four hundred thousand square feet. It's four hundred million dollars worth of buildings. We have to start replacing them. You're going to need to bond them at interest. You're talking about a half a billion dollars out of pocket, out of our pockets. We cannot defer the maintenance on these buildings, period, hard stop. Okay, we've enjoyed a twenty year honeymoon in terms of major maintenance items. Based on the fact that we had a major project cycle, all three buildings were done, uh, just over twenty years ago. Um, and with that, we've, we've enjoyed a period without a lot of, a lot of maintenance requirements. However, the tempo has increased notably over the course of the past five years. We in fact did fund the replacement for the air handlers, albeit, albeit that's still in process. Uh, but that was something you all voted on several years ago at this meeting. Um, we've funded outside stairs. We've funded replacement of the Deer Hill School hallways. Um, obsolete sprinkler, sprinkler heads, all types of things. Um, and the pace is definitely picking up and the requests outstrip capital budget's ability to fund these. And so we're prioritizing them uh, and deferring others. But the big items are really just yet to come. Um, we're talking about roofs, windows, HVAC systems, all the things that you experienced with your house when it hits about twenty five years since the last time you replaced one of those things. Uh, with these buildings, they're all coming at us and the scale is far beyond, beyond anything that can fit inside of our levy, levy or new growth. And so the question is, okay, how do we fund these? And that's where the debate at capital budget, I think, really, really came up. Some people believe that the right way to do it is to, um, bundle multiple projects on bond anticipation notes and then ultimately do um, excluded debt. Uh, other people were comfortable with the mechanism as proposed, um, which is this, um, uh, special purpose stabilization fund. Uh, and ultimately that debate, only that debate, uh, resulted in the split vote, three in favor, two against.
Thank you. Open it up for general discussion. Mr. Donahue.
Hi, John Donahue, Three Ledger Drive. Uh, the million five that is requested for this fund equates to twenty years, uh, based on the thirty million dollar number for repairs to be done. Um, is that how, I mean, how was the one point five million arrived at?
Somebody, the question is, how was the one point five million arrived at? Would somebody like to respond to that? And do you have further questions? Let's try to, if you have multiple questions, let's ask them all at once, if you would, please.
Um, I don't have any more.
So in the context of the Long Term Finance Committee and planning, a part of how we came to this was a combination of both looking at the priority list that we were facing, but also simultaneously considering the tax capacity of our residents as well. Um, certainly, I think the schools could use more money if we were to propose more money. Um, but at the same time, we were also trying to be mindful of in light of these other tax increases. how to do responsible requests across Cohasset's infrastructure. And we did feel that the one point five million was a good amount of money to begin really responsibly working down that list. We will, for example, also be simultaneously applying to the state for repair money as well to pair with our own money. And, you know, the state wants to see that we are contributing and investing in our schools before they give us money. And so that was a factor as well in terms of the money that we're looking at. But at the end of the day, it was a combination of many factors, both the needs and repairs of the schools and the timeline of the schools. So these are costs over time, right? It's not just all one tomorrow. It's costs over time that we're trying to keep up with and knock off as we move along, hopefully in combination with state grant money, too.
Mr. Moderator, may I ask a follow-up? I apologize, but the answer.
Yes, let's make the question and the answer brief.
Yes. So as it relates to, so the calculation is to some extent, a guess. But the question I had is, in normal corporate accounting, you take the useful life of a capital asset and you use that to plan capital expense. I understand that government accounting is somewhat different than that. But having said that, I mean, are there financial pro formas that would give us a more informed look forward than just, let's set up eight hundred here and one point five there?
Again, so we have a long, multi-tiered list that we're looking at, and we're projecting out based on when exactly we need to. And this is long-term, short-term, medium-term. And so, yes, these are rough estimates based on when we expect to be hitting those repairs, and I welcome anyone who wants to get up and correct me, including from the school facilities committee, but we're trying to tier it out based on amounts. And also when we think we need to do those repairs based on the high, medium priority list. So there is planning going on to try to account for all of that. But at the end of the day, and useful life is certainly a component of that.
Thank you. Mr. Antico.
Thank you. All Antico Atlantic Avenue. The schools obviously are essential to the town, need to be maintained, roads, police, fire departments. What's frustrating me, I admit some frustrations, I sit here, and more frustration myself for not speaking up earlier. But there's been a lot of commentary that we need the stabilization funds because the money can't be gained through the normal channels, the capital channels that we vote on every year in a budget. Towns, like people, like my children, I teach them, you've got to live within your means. I like not having the funds. I like not having the stabilization funds and the safety of people saying, okay, now we know we're getting this much and we can spend it. Because I like the fact that we need to understand the pushes and pulls that we that we need to make to live within our means. We've got a lot of people, I don't know how many in Cohasset, a lot of people in Massachusetts in the country that are trying to figure out how much food can I buy, or how much can I spend on my kid's clothes right now? We also have a budget as a town, just like as a family. And we need to make those tough decisions. And if we just keep making fund after fund and saying, we may not spend it. Yeah, we're going to spend it. You just put money in your kid's pocket and said, save it for, buy candy for the year. Now they're going to spend it in the next week. I think not having these funds forces us, allows the budget committee to do their work to say, okay, how much can we afford to spend on this? Because we need a lot, but we only have so much. So unless our taxes are going to go to fifty percent instead of eleven, twelve percent, I think we need to make the hard choices, and maybe that starts by not having these funds. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Mr. Jenkins.
Lee Jenkins, Jerusalem Road. I believe a few years ago, we took away the maintenance money from the schools, and we took it over to the town. And at the present time, I believe we fund a half a million dollars a year for maintenance of the schools. So with the one point five million more, we're going to, we're going to spend about two million dollars a year, not just a million and a half.
Thank you. In the back.
Adrian McCarthy, eighty-five Doan Street. Mr. Jenkins brings up a very important point. As a former member of Building Facilities Committee, Building Committee, and the School Committee, which I left on in two thousand and ten, I think it's very good for people who were not with us or too young to be here to understand that during those, the process of building, we heard from our town people that we were not taking care of the buildings. And I wasn't on the school committee when that portion happened. However, there was a promise. And I believe the state, when we entered into getting the sixty percent funding to help build these schools, expected us to take care of what we were given. And in the different discussions and meetings, to play nice with the selectmen on the town side, the school committee gave up their purse string of the maintenance and facility money, which was about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So because we felt, okay, we're going to play nice. The town is much more equipped to take care of these facilities, and here we are. And I have to tell you, when my first grader or kindergarten entered Osgood, it's a no-brainer in nineteen ninety-eight, when it's now two thousand twenty-three, that the roof hasn't been done. I've mentioned it before, probably not since I left in two thousand and ten, but I've been following. These are no brainers for a smart community, not to put money where it should be. I mean, that leak ridiculous. I mean, you, you see something in your own home, you address it. So I just think it's important at this point. I have not actually decided what, but I actually like Mr. Antico's point of view. I do love debate and hearing all these things. But I think the new stewards of this school and of the district and of our town need to smarten up because everything we have heard here today is defer, 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 defer. Oh, and now we have all these problems, not rocket science people. You take care of the house that you built, and then the state will actually say, oh, yes, you've done such a good job, and we realize it's twenty years and you need more money. We're going to help keep you going. But instead, the state said, ah, 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 we gave you sixty percent of, I think it was, I don't even know how much money, forty, fifty million dollars. We gave you sixty percent to get you there, and you promised that you would take care of it. You did not, and now you're getting nothing from us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. It does require two-thirds vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article Nine, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted by the requisite two-thirds vote. See to motion under Article Ten, School Preliminary Feasibility Study. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. I have a second. Thank you. Motion has been made in second. It does require a majority vote for adoption. For the school committee, I'll recognize Craig McClellan. I'll also make the comment, I totally understand people's personal schedules, but would ask, we do have five articles left. We'll try to get through them as expeditiously as we can. I would ask everybody to please dig deep for stamina and stick with us so we can get all that done this evening. Thank you. Mr. McClellan.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Craig McClellan. I reside at Eight Rustic Drive, and I have it's been my great pleasure to serve on the school committee, on our school committee for, since two thousand eighteen. I'm here to introduce the feasibility study warrant article. The fundamental objective behind this warrant article is to explore all options available to Cohasset as we consider a potential modernization project to our middle high school. Okay, this is exploratory in nature. It's a fact-finding mission. It does not commit us to any sort of project whatsoever. So you may ask, why are we doing this? It's a juncture. Well, the building that you're sitting in right now was designed to deliver a a traditional teaching and learning model in which teachers gave direct instruction to students seated in fixed rows before them. Education has evolved to a model that emphasizes more project-based learning, experiential learning, and peer-to-peer collaboration, both in and outside of the classroom. This model provides more robust, value-laden and memorable learning experience for our students and better prepares them for collegiate and professional environments. I'm just going to very quickly run through a few slides. Don't be scared. They're just a few photographs, and they go quick. They are depicting some common elements that you see in modern school buildings, and then it'll compare and contrast to what we currently operate with here at the Cohasset Middle High School. Let me see if I can get this to work. There we are. So elements that you commonly see in modern school buildings include things like breakout rooms for student-peer-to-peer collaboration that are adjacent to and part of actual classrooms oftentimes. So the teachers can engage students in peer-to-peer collaboration while they're still giving teacher-led direct instruction in the classroom nearby, can then invite the students back in to share their perspectives and conclusions that they reached independently. Also, what you'll see oftentimes in modern classrooms are open, often natural light-lit classrooms outfitted with furniture that is designed specifically to support collaboration and group study. You'll see classrooms that are, have direct access to technology all the time, hardwired into each classroom. Every student has access to technology and utilities from every seat and also common spaces that support the student's ability to collaborate with one another outside the classroom walls independently, whether it's formally through reservation of an innovation lab or a meeting space or more informal settings like this cafe solution for that programming need here where students can gather in a more social, organic setting. Again, something you'd see more often in a collegiate or professional environment. So compare and contrast that to what we currently have at the middle high school in Cohasset. And what we do have is a, we have a collection of makeshift and creative solutions so that we're able to deliver our students this learning product and provide them with, you know, access to utilities through, like I said, creative solutions while confronting the very real restrictions of our physical plant. So you can see, you know, retrofits to provide utility access. So I don't know why this picture is so fuzzy, but it's a fairly traditional classroom. The teachers often utilize, and you can see a cart with some technology, some mobile technology that they utilize, and efforts to ensure that the students are still engaging in peer-to-peer collaboration within the classrooms. Given the the square footage, the the more traditional setups they have, and the, again, the old-fashioned equipment, and what it often leads to is suboptimal.
Quick time check, you're at four minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm almost complete. So what it often leads to is a suboptimal product like this, where it's not atypical to see Cohasset middle high students using, you know, common spaces that are not outfitted for this type of learning seated on the floors. And that's just not something, so here, there's a few pieces of furniture, but still suboptimal. This is, of course, not what we're looking for in Cohasset. We want to make sure our students are outfitted with the optimal learning environment. And, you know, basically, I don't want to give the impression that we're offering anything but a strong education here. But we can improve upon our physical plant. You know, in other words, you might have a really strong horse, right? But you're best served to explore options for an upgrade if everyone else is using a car. And I think that's where we're at now. And there are other implications that hopefully we'll discuss during the discussion here with the MSBA process. This is designed to work in a parallel path, is not to replace the MSBA process that we're currently engaged in and applying for, for the state subsidization of that. And I'd ask that you please join me in supporting this very important initiative for the Cohasset Public Schools and for our community at large. Thank you.
Thank you. For the select board, I recognize Ellen Maher.
The Select Board voted five to zero unanimously to support this article. We feel it's very important that we begin to develop a pathway for the future for our schools and our repair and maintenance program. And it will be very helpful in determining how the stabilization fund from the previous article can be utilized. Thank you.
Thank you. The advisory committee has recommended approval by a vote of nine to zero. For the capital budget committee, I recognize Brian Host.
So just to be clear, this is a four hundred thousand dollar request for a feasibility study. I just want to clarify a couple of misconceptions that that may have arisen before I dive more deeply into the request itself. First, we have an extremely robust network across all of our schools, including Wi-Fi access in every location and every building. You funded that, and originally about five years ago, you funded it again last year to upgrade every switch, every server across the buildings and across the town, for that matter. On that backbone, we are now in the process of deploying interactive touchscreen digital whiteboards. We approved at the, at the, at the Springtown meeting. All of those for the entire middle school. We're going to do the high school next. I assume we're either going to do Deer Hill or Osgood after that, but we're doing one building per year. In terms of the furniture not being reconfigurable, we're replacing one grade worth of student furniture per year. The grade is at the school's choice, and the furniture is the school's choice. So to the extent it's not reconfigurable, that's a project that's being fixed. Now, on to the feasibility study with regards to the actual buildings. The doors on this building, post-renovation, opened in two thousand and three. It was a gut reno plus an expansion. Everything in this building, with the exception of the bricks and the mortar, are new. It's two hundred and twenty-eight thousand square feet. It's a two hundred and twenty-eight million dollar replacement cost at today's value. We, the committee, are very hesitant to engage in a feasibility study to replace a building, this building, or to reno in a major way, this building, outside of the MSBA process. The feeling's very different once MSBA says go. But they bring substantial grant funding. They bring unparalleled expertise. They've been in almost every school project in the Commonwealth. You can count the exceptions on one hand. They are the best possible consultants, and they're not only free, they'll pay us to be part of the project someday. But we have to be patient and do the process their way. There's an application in front of them right now. We may or may get a yes, may or may not get a yes. It may take several tries. It typically does. We fully support studying options to improve and extend the life of this building and to maximize the utility of this twenty-year-old investment. We support the schools in a major way. We just voted as such on the past article. But the majority on this article of capital budget do not support the request, given that there's not a clearly defined scope. There's an MSBA decision pending, and even if it's a no, we expected several cycles before getting to yes. The best description that we received of this included a hundred thousand dollars of site work, which is absolutely redundant with work that was done twenty years ago. We understand we may need to repeat that in the event of a construction project, but we don't need to repeat it for purposes of planning. We have enough to know that the asbestos was removed twenty years ago. We have enough to know where the sightlines are because we have the civil engineering documents. And we will find more, and we're in the process of finding more. Finally, you know, the this simple math on this is that we can spend four hundred thousand dollars and get roughly two hundred thousand dollars of credit for it from the MSBA when they ultimately invite us into the, into a, into their program. Or we can spend four hundred thousand dollars after the MSBA invites us in. They'll probably give us another two hundred thousand based on a one-third, two-third split, which is kind of typical these days. And they'll give us a hundred percent credit for that six hundred thousand dollars. So it's just a simple question. We would rather spend four hundred grand and get two hundred value, or we'd rather spend four hundred grand and get six hundred value. We like choice B, and hence the recommendation, although split, was two in favor and three against the proposal that's in front of you today.
Thank you. We'll open it up for discussion. Mr. Donahue.
Hi, John Donahue, Three Ledge Drive. On this question, I understood from the selectman that they're suggesting that the four hundred thousand is necessary to plan the spending in the stabilization fund in Article Nine. That was one of the reasons they they mentioned for it. I guess it sounds to me, you know, based on what I'm hearing from capital budget, that there is a that there is a lack of clarity. And I think we've already devoted a significant amount of money, more than just being able to devote more money to determine how we're going to spend the stabilization. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Spofford.
Rob Spofford, 14 Heather Drive. I was chairman of the School Building Facilities Committee 20 years ago. Stood in front of this town meeting, many of you look familiar. I see a number of our committee members here. I can confirm a number of the things that Brian did say. Everything in this building from here over is brand-new construction. We did all of this, everything on the half part here. It was a gut renovation. We took everything out, we had to make sure we didn't have asbestos. The question I guess I have for this on the feasibility study is the feasibility study to study a new school? Or is it to actually decide on whether this building can actually be retrofitted to take on the educational program that they have?
Mr. McClellan, would you like to respond to the question?
Yes, thank you.
Rob, do you have any other questions?
I do.
Okay, let's ask them all at once then, please.
Want me to ask them all at once? Well, let me just make another couple comments. When you do a feasibility study, I want to also ask the question is, are they going to use to do the feasibility study with the architect that would ultimately do the building? Because if they are going to do that in your feasibility study, you need to be very careful that there is potential inherent conflict of interest, because, and I'm not saying that any architectural firm will do that, but as, you know, as I think a lot of you know, we were successful in building those schools on budget and on time, because we paid attention to the dollars, is that you have to make sure that if what we're looking for is actually getting the information, is this building capable of doing the educational program that the school committee wants to do? Or is it actually that we want a new school? So I guess I would also ask that question too. Is, are they planning to use the feasibility study? Is it going to be the architect that will ultimately do the drawings for the school?
Thank you. Mr. McClellan.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. As to the first question, sir, the study would be, like I said, exploratory in nature. So it is not to build a new school. It is to figure out what options are available to Cohasset as we are approaching what will be one of the largest expenses that we confront as a community. And it is coming. It is going to come. So we have seen debates about capital projects here, and people have had concerns about options that have not been explored. We are doing this at an early juncture to make sure that this project, whatever it might be, it's not necessarily a new school. It might be another renovation. It might be something else, remodeling. We don't know. We're going to have a professional look at that after discussing with the community and the stakeholders what our educational programming visions are, what our athletic and extracurricular and enrichment programming needs are, and what our community resource needs are. Don't forget that this is the most widely-used community building we have, right? And we can incorporate things like performing arts center, physical fitness centers, event venues if we want, you know, like Abington Middle High School has an atrium where, you know, they can host things and people can have, you know, meetings in there, it can be a revenue gain. So there's all kinds of different needs to be taken into consideration, and looking at those needs in tandem with the community's financial resources and ability to finance various projects, they're going to come up with some solutions, some potential options. Now, yes, it is true that the MSBA will require us to go through a process, but this will be a private feasibility study that we also have in our arsenal to make an informed decision. It's not just one study. And we don't know when the MSBA train's going to arrive in the station, if ever. We could just be waiting on the platform, doing nothing, and meanwhile, the school's getting older. And unlike a car, when you need a new school, you can't just go to the dealership. Once you're committed to that project, you've got about five to seven years before students are going in that building. So it behooves us to have an idea of the options that are going to be before us. As far as your second question relative to which design professional that we would use, I don't know. I think that would ferret out as we get deeper into the process. That's certainly nothing that I think we've determined at this time. Certainly nothing that I'm aware of. But, and you know, it's a public project, so there's a bidding process that would be associated with this.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Mr. Dormitzer.
Ralph Dormitzer, 111 Atlantic Ave. I guess the question for clarity is exactly what has been applied for from the Massachusetts School Building Authority? Is it for a new school explicitly? Or is it for some renovation or some other alternative? Or have you specifically asked them to support a new school or not?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Dormitzer, we have applied to the Massachusetts School Building Authority's core program, which provides partial subsidy for replacement or major renovations of public school districts. The ultimate project would be something that a feasibility study would dictate.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. The motion under Article 10 does require a majority vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article 10, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. That's too close to call. I'm afraid I'm going to ask the tellers to take their stations, and please wait one second, well, 30 seconds for them to get to their stations. Okay, all five tellers ready? Great. All those in favor, yeses, please put your pink slips up in the air. Keep them high. This count should be a little bit faster than the last ones, but keep them up, please. Okay, you can put your hands down. Give the tellers a few seconds to get back to their stations. Okay, all those opposed, noes, please put your pink slips high up in the air. Oh, so I'm sorry. Yes, you can put your hands down. Thank you, Ms. My apologies. Okay, the count is, in favor, 137, opposed, 76. That is well more than a majority. The motion under Article 10 passes. And the good news is, we have still, at this moment at least, more than 200 people in the room. We'll proceed to Article 11, Cemetery Rules and Regulations. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? The motion has been made in second. It does require a majority vote for adoption. I'll recognize our town manager, Chris Senior.
This packet of regulations are a necessary update. The last time the regs were updated was some time ago. And they're all in the packet in front of you. I will not describe them, but they're important to do.
Thank you. The Select Board recommends approval by a vote of five to zero. The Advisory Committee recommends approval by a vote of nine to zero. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. Majority is required. Motion under Article 11. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article 12, Wetlands Protection Bylaw Revisions. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you. Does require a majority vote for adoption. I'll recognize our conservation agent, Charlotte Pechtel. Is she here? I thought that she was going to speak. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, thank you, everyone. I'll be as brief as I can. So this revision proposal was a recommendation from town council. It is adding the 200-foot riverfront area to a certain section in our bylaw that lists all of the resource areas subject to protection under our bylaw. It is not anything new. It is, the 200-foot riverfront area is already a resource area that we protect under the Wetlands Protection Act from the state and from our existing rules and regulations. So we're really just adding this resource area to this specific section of the bylaw to just be really clear and consistent between the three different regulatory entities. So it's really just part of our administrative cleanup of the Wetlands Protection Bylaw, and we're not really changing anything that we already protect. The 200-foot riverfront area, just to give you guys a quick refresher, is from annual mean-high water of a perennial river or stream. So again, this is already an existing resource area that we protect, and we just wanted to be really clear that it's listed in the bylaw in addition to our existing regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. The Advisory Committee has recommended approval by a vote of nine to zero. And the Conservation Commission has recommended approval by a vote of four to zero. Is there discussion? No, great. We'll proceed to a voice vote. Majority vote is required. Motion under Article 12. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is a, sorry, was there a nay? Okay, the motion is adopted by the requisite majority vote.
Thank you.
Article 13, Zoning Bylaw. Mend Article Number Four Use Regulations. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? We're going to have the proponents first. No, the motion has been made. Is there a second? Thank you. A motion has been made in second, and a two-thirds vote is required. For the zoning bylaw working group, I'll recognize Tom Callahan.
Thank you. Tom Callahan, 35 Hillside Drive, Chairman of the Zoning Bylaw Committee and of the Planning Board. Very briefly, with this hour, this is the next step in our reform of the Cohasset zoning bylaw from top to bottom. Tonight, we are dealing with an Article 13 amendment of Article Four, which governs uses, and an Article 14, Article Five of the bylaw, which deals with dimensions. We have had the great privilege of the assistance of the Honorable Judith Cutler, KP Law. She's a former chief judge of the land court, and I'm going to defer to her to make the presentations for these articles, if I may.
Thank you. Continuing on our theme of upgrading and updating older infrastructure, we are dealing, the zoning bylaw committee has been working very hard the last year or so, working on upgrading and updating the zoning bylaws, which were last really overhauled back in the 1980s. So nothing significant is changing with these proposals. Mostly, it's housekeeping and organizational changes, trying to make it user-friendly and a little clearer in the language, as well as being internally consistent with itself and other section, with each section of the bylaw and with state law. The housekeeping changes under Article 14 deal with the use regulations section of the zoning bylaws. And those housekeeping changes include dividing up the principal use regulations and the accessory use regulations into two different sections of the article, creating a new table of principal uses based on a broad principal use category organization in lieu of the current table of uses, which is one-by-one-by-one individual uses. The current table, which was adopted in 1989, lists only specific uses and actually doesn't differentiate between principal and accessory uses. We've also supplemented the table of principal uses with broad descriptions of each category of principal use. And we've updated the use regulations to specifically address statutorily exempt uses, educational, religious, childcare, and agricultural uses, as well as solar energy uses. We've also tried to eliminate some of the more outdated uses. These include lodging units and dry cleaning plants, cold storage plants, and freezer plants. Recognized and added some more modern use categories, including pet daycare, electric vehicle charging stations, to name two of them. We've also tried to put all principal use regulations into the text of Article Four rather than in a separate appendix, so that we've incorporated the full table of uses directly into the bylaw. You don't have to flip back and forth anymore. And created a separate section for the bylaws, temporary use regulations. And in conjunction with this, we are amending some of the Article Two definitions of terms and uses that are now in Article Four. And finally, we've deleted some definitions of terms that are no longer necessary. That includes the lodging unit, bed and breakfast house, apartment, and terms that are now described within Article Four and are not necessarily necessarily defined or need for a definition in Article Two. In addition to those kind of broad housekeeping changes, there are some substantive changes I want to bring to your attention.
Just to check time check, you're at almost four minutes.
I have about one minute.
That would be perfect.
Okay. So the principal use categories, as I said, expand the type of uses. We've additionally addressed large-scale, ground-mounted solar installations, which are currently allowed by special permit only in the overlay district. They're now being allowed in the TV district. We're generally also allowing, changing the accessory dwelling unit regulations to make them a little easier to use, allowing them to be used, an ADU to be put into an existing accessory building, allowing them to be used to, an ADU to be put into an existing accessory building, allowing certain exterior changes and additions to an existing dwelling or accessory building in order to accommodate an ADU, and allowing the ADU special permit to run with the land instead of terminating on the sale of the building. Changed the common driveway regulations, moved them from Article Seven to Article Four, and identified common driveways as a specific accessory use that's allowed by special permit. Some new accessory uses were added, small-scale roof-mounted and ground-mounted solar energy installations for home and business use, and accessory vehicle charging, electric vehicle charging stations to be allowed by right in residential districts for the use of the occupants. And in non-residential districts, there'll be accessory electric vehicle charging stations as well. And finally, the inclusionary housing requirements are now referred to as the inclusionary housing contribution requirements. And the regulations have been sort of tried to simplify and modify and clarify the purposes.
Thank you. For the Select Board, I'll recognize Jack Creighton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, Judge Cutler. I trust everybody understands why we hired Judge Cutler to do all this work. She's very succinct, and I will be very succinct. The Board of Selectmen voted approval by a vote of five to zero. The Advisory Committee recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. The Planning Board recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. And just so all of you know, should recall, two years ago, we had a lot of zoning discussions, and the conclusion of the town meeting was we needed more information. It needed to be redone. The Select Board subsequently appointed a specific committee, a zoning bylaw committee. And the Select Board also instructed our Town Council to take our zoning bylaws and rewrite them and make them current and consistent and adhering to the best practices of Commonwealth laws. And this makes it possible, when you want to do something at your home, you'll be able to understand the zoning code. If you have an attorney, your attorney will be able to do it at a lot less amount of money. You will have certainty of knowing what you can do with your property and what your neighbors can do with their property. And I think a job is well done, and we ask your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. The Advisory Committee has voted seven, zero to recommend approval. The Planning Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Does anyone from the Zoning Board of Appeals want to speak, or no? Okay, no. Is there discussion? I see Mr. Satchuk.
One of the things that just came up now that you've heard from the judge, and that is in all non-residential districts, the Planning Board may approve the installation of one or more accessory electric vehicle charging stations through site plan review, subject to the following. The first item is the one that I'm concerned about. I'll read the second and third and fourth. The installation of the charging station will not result in a reduction of any required parking spaces. So at a gas station, they can't take, if they need five spaces, they have to have six spaces if they want to keep the five for the unit. The location and positioning of the charging station allows for safe and easy accessibility. The Planning Board may condition its approval with appropriate safeguards and impose a limit on the thing. My problem is, it says the charging station service is provided at no cost to the user. What commercial build, a business like a gas station can put in all this infrastructure and then not be able to charge for the electricity that's being used? And so I think that should be deleted and it and have not get into the financial aspects of what it is that you're allowing. If they're, obviously, they're losing, they're going to, we're going to have 10 or 20 or 30 or 40% cars in the future, and this just doesn't make sense. So I, as a point, I'd like to have that line struck out. The second one, and I can't tell you the page that it is because it's part of the, what was given out today. And there's one item, and I'll say, I have an interest from other people for doing something, but we can't do it because it says that it's not allowed, and it is in the highway business district, and it is for, it's sort of weird the way they're doing it, but open-air wholesale or storage business. And under A, it says enclosed wholesale or storage business, and it is for a a proposed storage facility different than what was just built on 3A, which was a huge success and has no traffic going to it. And many, many people in Cohasset are customers of having those storage units. And in here, it says that it's not allowed in the highway business district. And I want to make a motion to make that say that it could be allowed by special permit. So take the no out of number five, open-air business uses, what the handout was today, to F, and also light industry uses to A, to be changed from no to special permit, SP.
So, sorry, do I understand? Are you proposing an amendment?
Yes.
Can you bring it up here in writing, please?
I'll give you when I have my hand.
Okay.
Okay. And then it's the first considered amendment, too, because it is, it was just introduced tonight, and it is
If you'd like to change anything in the motion, then yes, it's an amendment. You can either encourage people to defeat the article motion, or you can propose an amendment. If you propose amendment, you have to give it to us in writing so that we can then, the meeting can understand what you're proposing to amend. Okay?
Okay.
Let's see if we can make this work. While Mr. Tidick is walking up, is there any other comments generally on the? I'm sorry, Mr. Satchuk. Sorry, Woody. I just messed up the names, Wayne. Sir?
Steve Winter, 195 Paul Street. I have the same problem that Wayne had also with the section on electric vehicle charging stations. B1, the charging service is provided at no cost to the user. I think people should be aware that the town of Cohasset has provided 18 charging ports for the use of Cohasset or any, anybody, any, for the public. They were originally free, the electricity was originally free, but now the town is charging for the, for the electricity. Does this mean that any future charging stations that the town were to provide for the public would have to be free of charge? And does this mean we have to stop charging for this, for the charging ports that we have now? This does not seem quite reasonable. And also, if a business or a non-commercial entity, nonprofit, or whatever, wanted to install charging stations, why should they have to eat the cost of the electricity?
I think there was a question in there. If you'd like to respond to Mr. Callahan.
I'll respond to that and to Mr. Satchuk as well. The electric use that you're all talking about is an accessory use, not a principal use. And so accessory means it's secondary, secondary to the building, what's the primary use on the site. It's there essentially for that business to use, not for the general public. If you want to create an electric charging station on 3A that is the principal use, open to the public, you can charge for it. You're misreading what the use, the use you're referring to is listed under accessory uses. So it's not there for the use of the general public. It's accessory sideline to the, to the principal use on the site, primarily be used by the owner of the principal use of the site. With respect to Mr. Satchuk's comments, we are not changing anything from the current bylaw in terms of uses. The use you cite is not allowed currently in the highway business district. We are reorganizing this in a better and a more comprehensive way and easier to understand way. Maybe not to everyone, but we are not making radical change in the uses that we have allowed to this point, that we do not allow to this point. This is mostly a reorganization of it in a way that is easier to find, easier to reference, and that's what we're doing here. And so you may suggest that we want to do something by special permit, but it hasn't been by special permit ever. And as Chair of the Planning Board, I'll say, we recommended, you know, we vetted these articles in a public hearing, and we recommend their passage. And as you heard, there's been no opposition in any of the boards. I'll give credit to the zoning board. Their vote was six to zero as well. But we were not making, we're not intending here to make radical change. We're just organizing these things in a, in a better and a more understandable way. So we do not approve, now approving something here, you know, off our hip on the floor of town meeting by special permit that we have not allowed up until this point under our current bylaw.
Okay, so Mr. Satchuk has made a motion. Let me explain to you what it is, and then we can see if there is a second. He's proposing two changes to the motion that's on the floor. One is in the portion of the table that is in your motion packet. The pages aren't numbered, so bear with me. It's the one, two, three, four, fifth page of the table. It's in use categories under 5F and 6A. So again, use category 5F, open-air wholesale or storage business, and 6A, enclosed wholesale or storage business. His amendment would change in the column HB under non-residential districts. It would change no to SP, and same thing in column HB under 6A, no to SP. Did anyone who wants to see that change on their piece of paper not get it? Okay, everybody good. So two categories, 6F, column HB changes from no to SP. Column, row 6A, column HB changes no to SP. So that's the first part of his amendment. The second part of his amendment is on page 33 of your printed warrant to strike out clause, little romanette one, little i in the hole, as we say in the legal world, under 11B. So that now reads, as you've heard him read before, the charging service is provided at no cost to the, or his amendment would strike that line. So is there discussion of Mr. Satchuk's amendment? The way the procedure works is amendment has now been made. We're going to discuss the amendment. There may be other things in the, in the proposal that people want to talk about, but this discussion now is going to be solely on those two changes. And then we're going to vote, actually, we're going to ask for a second, the second, but there's one amendment bundled together. Let me ask, is there a second? Is there a second? Okay, second. The motion has been made and seconded. There's the two components of his amendment that I described. Is there any discussion on the amendment, sir?
I suggest to break them apart. I would potentially
Can I ask a point of order clarification?
Sure.
Mr. Callahan explained that he's not changing anything.
He doesn't have the, if the town meeting votes to make the amendment, he doesn't want you to change it. But the town meeting is voting on the amendment. So the gentleman there has suggested we break them apart. That's fine with me. The first amendment is changes to the matrix that I described. It's changing row 5F, column HB, from no to SP. It's changing 6A, row, column HB, from no to SP. Is there discussion of that amendment? Actually, let me have a second for that broken apart amendment. Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Is there discussion? Mr. Carr?
Mr. Moderator, thank you very much. This is a very important issue, and I think a excellent amendment, but is there anybody here from the Alternative Energy Committee could explain a little bit about rates and how we got to this point with charging stations and stuff? I think it's relevant. And is there anybody that might be able to speak to that?
Point of order? Point of order?
Tonya Baudel, 88 South
Hold on, sorry, we've been, had a point of order, sir.
Aren't we discussing the broken apart use regulations right now?
No, that's a fair point. Thank you. That's a very good point. The question that Mr. Carr raised was not about the amendments on the floor right now. We're talking about the use designations. Is there any discussion on that?
So I
Sir?
Sorry, Tom Mead, 711 Jerusalem Road. I forgot to say that last time. Can somebody explain in plain English what this would allow that it doesn't currently allow?
Mr. Satchuk, whether since it's your amendment, why don't you take the crack at explaining what your amendment would allow that it does not now allow? And I ask everyone both for your stamina and for your brevity.
Basically, basically, this allows an applicant who wants to do something in the highway business district to be able to apply for a permit from the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals to see if their project would, would be something the town would like and could proceed. As it is now, it says that you cannot ask permission, you can't do anything on this, on your property that relates to indoor storage. And that's, that's what it would basically do. So it would say, you just, you can't even apply to it. You can't, you just can't do it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Is there further discussion on the amendment?
May I just again?
Yeah, yeah, you can.
Again, I'll point this out. The, the, the use of the enclosed area is allowed in the Technology Business District and the Light Industry District, both sections of 3A. It is not allowed in the Highway Business District today. Right? And it has been, it has been that way for at least 40 years, if not longer. Ditto with the other, the open-air use, not permitted in highway business, permitted in the other two districts on 3A by either special permit or as of right. So don't say that it's not permitted on some properties. The town has made a value judgment going back decades that we don't want this generally on the highway on 3A. We want it in certain areas of 3A, and the facility that was built, was built in one of those areas. And again, our intent here is not to make radical changes in uses that we have prohibited and allowed. We are just reorganizing them, but we are not making radical change in what we have previously allowed or prohibited. That's
Is there further discussion?
Making that change on the fly.
Is there further discussion of the proposed amendment? Yes.
David McMorris, 89 Dawn Street. I'm a member of the Zoning Board. These amendments were intended to be housekeeping, cleaning up, and organization. There is a plan to discuss substantive changes to the zoning bylaws over the next few months to be presented at Springtown Meeting so that everybody has opportunities for public hearings, for discussion, for all the committees that are involved to discuss these things fully. Doing things on the floor of town meeting to zoning bylaws where you don't really have an opportunity to think about them and see what the the implications may be is really a bad idea. And if this is something that should be changed, it can be changed, but it should be changed after it's been vetted and discussed and brought to town meeting with a full explanation. Thank you.
This was brought up now because of the rest of the stuff that was fresh tonight and in the warrant. And it is just, to me, it's like, and of course, the chairman here knows about my interest in this and in that. It's just, it just doesn't make sense that you can have gas stations and you can have repair garages and everything, and you can't have an indoor storage facility.
Okay, I think, I think we've
It only allows me to be able to make an application. That's all.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion of the amendment?
Mr. Moderator, can I make a suggestion? Can this, can this be indefinitely postponed until the Springtown meeting?
No, not the amendment.
But the amendment?
Is there any further discussion of the amendment?
Of the First Amendment, right?
Correct, First Amendment. Great. We'll proceed to a voice vote on the First Amendment, which is the changes to the matrix that I described, requires a majority vote for adoption. All those in favor, please signify by All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is defeated. Would you like to make a motion on your other one?
Yes, I would, please.
Okay, he has another motion, which is to delete on page thirty-three of your warrant clause I, which reads the charging services provided no cost to the user. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. The motion to amend would require a majority vote. Is there discussion of the amendment?
Yes, this affects everybody in town. I, I think it's absolutely like an era that you can't recover the costs of putting in charge of stations. When in the town, in fact, is, is getting close to wanting to charge for the charging stations that are, that are next to the, near the Red Lion Inn, for instance, because it's going to cost the town money for the electricity. And many, many folks don't have two hundred amp services to put charging stations at their own houses. So they, they really, they have to go somewhere. And in fact, it's not going to cost them, but it's costing someone else. So I don't think the charging stations will get built if, if they can't recover their costs and pay for the electricity. Well, they didn't get three dollar gasoline, but no, don't do that. Get your free electricity here. That's worth three dollars.
Okay, is there further discussion? Sir?
Tom Mead, seven eleven Jerusalem Road. I, I'd be in favor of striking the requirement for free electricity. Part of this, I think, is what Ted was just starting to point towards was you used to be able to get credits back from the electricity or utility companies to put these in. And those rebates are going to run out. And I think generally speaking, if we want to encourage, for example, I, I own a building on three A. I own an electric vehicle. I'm going to put a charging station at my office. I also would love to have a charging option and let anybody who's driving down three A and needs to get a quick charge to come in. It's not, it's still an accessory use. I'm not out here, you know, trying to wave people in and make money off of charging electric vehicles. But I am trying to support the infrastructure for this sustainable way of getting us around.
Thank you. Is there further discussion of the proposed amendment? Yes, go ahead.
Tanya Bodell, eighty-eight South Main Street, Chair of the Alternative Energy Committee. This was a concern and we raised it. We raised it with respect to the town meters, which are currently charging. We also raised it with respect to other commercial electric vehicle charging stations that we would want to encourage third parties potentially to provide in exchange for charging. The technology exists, the sharing economy exists. There's lots of opportunity for electric vehicle charging stations if they can be charged for.
Thank you. Sure, yes.
Clarify a few things that came up because I just, I don't think.
And this is specifically on this amendment?
Specifically on this amendment. So electric vehicle charging stations are not currently addressed in the zoning bylaw. As an incremental change, again, this was not a major overhaul of the uses that are allowed throughout the town. However, two things occurred. One, we wanted to make it clear that residential properties can have an electrical vehicle charging station on their land for their own use as well as businesses. Businesses, however, in order to keep it as an accessory use, it was determined that charging non-customers or non-clients or non-employees of that business was beyond the scope of an accessory use. If however, you have a service, an automobile service station such as now serve mostly gasoline, they can have electric vehicle charging stations as part of the service station, which they can charge for just as they charge for the gasoline that's pumped from the, from their pumps. That's an automobile service station, which is allowed in certain districts, I think, including the Highway Business District as a principal use. The third thing I want to mention is if it's town-owned electric vehicle charging stations, the town uses, municipal uses are exempt from the zoning bylaw. And the town would be able to have electric vehicle charging stations. There may be other municipal limitations on how much they can charge. But this would not be affected. This would not be an accessory use. It's contemplated under this section, subsection eleven. So. That's all. I hope that.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion of the proposed, no, no. Is there any further discussion of the proposed amendment? Sir?
Hi, Kevin Hein, fifty-seven Howell Road. You know, I just want to add here, I, I also am a, a member of the Planning Board. Keep in mind, electric vehicle charging stations, what you consider an electric vehicle charging station today may be different than what rolls out tomorrow in this area. You know, there could be some changes in technology, so we're not just plugging in things at electric vehicle charging stations tomorrow like we are today. It may be a different type of setup, a different technology that's implemented for the vehicles of tomorrow at the charging stations of tomorrow. So making changes on the floor of town meeting after ten thirty at night, I would really caution against that because I'm not sure the thinking is really there with what tomorrow is going to bring to the vehicles we see today and that are actually there tomorrow at electric vehicle charging stations. There's been a lot of thought and work and meetings and open discussions about these things. These have been vetted through multiple meetings and different committees. These changes have come forth ahead of being printed in this bulletin that we have in front of us. Unanimous approval across the board. I would really caution against any type of recommendation to change anything here. And I would strongly recommend a voting down this amendment and any others. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion with new points on the amendment? Mr. Carr?
My question relates to revenue to the town. Like I, I think it's important to consider anything we change in terms of zoning or anything. What helps us offset many of the things we're talking about tonight? Does this amendment affect our ability to help the town in a way that we don't fully understand in terms of revenue or costs are offsetting our electricity?
Is that a rhetorical question or did you, will you want someone to answer?
Real question. I don't want to change anything that all of a sudden we turn off a spigot to revenue to the town that we have been appreciative.
Okay, thank you. Is there further discussion of the proposed amendment? Mr. Pers?
Peter Pers, twenty-three Forest Notch. If you're going to stop and shop, wouldn't it be nice to be able to plug in your car for twenty minutes while you shop? Getting your hair done, would it be nice to plug in your car? It'd be nice for the hairdresser to get an extra few bucks while you're plugging in your car. All of the shopping centers are eventually, should have charging stations that they should be able to charge for.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion of the proposed amendment? We'll proceed to a voice vote. The amendment does require a majority vote for adoption. Again, it would delete the clause that reads the charging service is provided no cost to the user. All in favor of the proposed amendment to delete that clause, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The amendment is defeated. We are now returning to a discussion of the original main motion. Is there further discussion of the main motion? We'll proceed to a voice vote on the main motion under Article thirteen. It does require a majority vote. Mr. Mead?
Yeah, hate to do it. But I had two questions on common driveways.
Sorry, name and a street number, please.
Yeah, Tom, Tom Mead, seven eleven Jerusalem Road. On the common driveways and in the affordable housing, do the affordable housing first. So you said that's been updated. Does that now include the actual calculation for a payment in lieu of units? Simple yes or no? And, and then on the common driveways, my concern with this issue was it seemed to be like with this new definition and or whatever regulations put in place by the Planning Board, is this actually a pretty significant change? My understanding, I didn't study the issue, I'll admit. But my understanding is that like it, it pretty seriously increased the requirements for the construction of the road, like almost to like mass highway type thing. So just want to ask somebody from planning to weigh in on that.
Thank you.
First thing on the affordable housing component, our current bylaw offers three possible alternatives. Build it on site, payment in lieu or build it offsite. We've had recent examples, the hotel project down in the harbor, they didn't, couldn't build the units on site or it wasn't appropriate to build them on site. They built them. They created four units offsite. So that's done. All we were doing here with the revision is ordering priority of that. But our first choice in priority is onsite. Second choice is offsite to actually create units. Third choice is payment in lieu. We have never had an accurate measurement for payment in lieu. It's a great cop out for developers. Yeah, we're here, we'll write you a check. We don't even know how to measure the check. We don't want to encourage it. It's now the third choice in the three, in the three choices that you have. It's the, it's the least, the last priority. So all we've really done here is restate those three choices in order of priority and preference. With respect to, I don't know, it's escaped me, it's late. What was the other question?
Common drives.
Oh, the common driveway. The main change in the common driveway is how many properties can be served by a common driveway. We have allowed up to eight homes to be served by a common driveway. We are an outlier on that. The average is three or four. And that's what we've reduced it to is to four lots that can be served by a common driveway. We haven't changed the length. Length kind of goes with that, or it should be shorter, but it, we haven't changed that. But that's the main change of the common driveway. It's just how many lots are being served. And we have been for years, a true outlier on that in comparison to surrounding towns.
Thank you. Is there further discussion?
Just very quick follow-up. So is, has, did the road specs change or not?
I'm sorry?
The specs required.
I don't believe we've changed the specs at all. There was a proposal months ago to change the specs, but that never went anywhere.
Okay, thank you. And the second thing on affordable housing, I guess, not germane here, but it's not a cop-off for developers. It's can be a very good thing for the town. And I would highly suggest that it's, it's on the town to create that. It's not that nobody understands what it is. The town needs to define what that calculation wants to be. Developers will happily pay it. The Affordable Housing Trust will happily take the check and then be able to do some work to develop affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion under Article thirteen? We'll proceed to a voice vote. Zoning bylaw amendment does require two-thirds vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article thirteen, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted by with a requisite two-thirds vote. We'll proceed to a motion under Article fourteen. Zoning bylaw amend Article number five dimensional regulations. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Two-thirds vote is required. We having, again, having Judge Cutler? And let's try to keep this really brief, please.
Much briefer, much shorter. Again, these are primarily housekeeping and organizational changes to Article five, the dimensional regulations in the zoning bylaw. The proposed new text incorporates the dimensional table into the body of the, of the bylaw, just as we did with the use tables. We have housekeeping and organizational changes, including reorganizing the existing dimensional regulations and taking all the notes that are currently at the end of the table of, of dimensional, of area regulations. And now in putting them into regulatory language in the bylaw itself rather than as notes. And we've changed several of the definitions of some of the dimensional terms. In terms of the more substantive changes, the existing corner clearance regulation has been clarified. It's now a clear vision safety triangle at the corner of a lot to allow clear sight when one is driving. The applicability of large house plan review has been expanded by including all the buildings on the lot in the calculation of residential gross floor area rather than just the single family dwelling. A new maximum height restriction has been placed of twenty-five feet on all accessory structures, except a very few solar energy and wind energy systems being exceptions and certain walls and fences being exceptions. Right now, the current accessory structure height is the same as a principal structure height in most cases. And finally, an apparently unused allowance for reduced lot areas based upon the average of the areas of adjacent lots being created has just simply been removed. It's not you, no one could recall it ever being used or why it was put in the bylaw back in the nineteen eighties. That's about it.
Thank you. For the select board, I'll recognize Jack Creighton.
Select Board says approve. Advisory, I believe, approved. And Planning Board approved. Thank you. It's late.
Thank you. The advisory committee has recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. The Planning Board has recommended approval by a vote of four to zero. Is there further discussion? Those are, yes.
I, I appreciate the housekeeping.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry, Lance Style, twenty-one Rocky Lane. I appreciate the housekeeping changes. I am a little concerned about the substantive changes. It seems like we're running those really through without a lot of understanding. Can you please explain the benefit of the large house plan review on residential gross floor area and why it's beneficial for me as a property owner to for restrictions on my ability to build an accessory structure at a lower height?
All right, well, with respect to large home review, we are including more areas of building because what we're seeing lately on the Planning Board are structures well over five thousand, as high as nine. We recently had a ten thousand. And we're seeing a lot of four, five, six car garages that are taking up the site that were not being included. So we are including more of the type of building area that we are seeing in these recent applications. As a consequence of though, that right now, the trigger for large home review is thirty-five hundred square feet of the area that we've defined. We're increasing that to four thousand as, as an offset, some offset to what we're adding into the definition of what constitutes gross floor area. But it's, it's, it's in direct response to what we are seeing in the actual construction projects that are coming before us. With respect to accessory structures, we essentially have not had a height limit. Our, our silence has said it's thirty-five feet. But we think that there should be a distinction between the main structure and an accessory structure, a garage or a shed. They shouldn't be as tall and as big as the main structure. And that's the rationale, the simple rationale behind it.
So just to follow up on the, on this latter part, that's an aesthetics decision rather than a functional decision?
I'm sorry?
Is that an aesthetics decision or is there science behind it about why an accessory building should be lower? Or just the kind of the.
It's, well, I don't, I don't know if you want to define it as aesthetics or it just, do, do you want to see so much bulk on a neighboring property where there are two thirty-five foot high structures built on the property? And most houses do not have that. Most accessory structures are smaller by nature, by design. We're just perpetuating that or just incorporating that and memorializing it into the bylaw for the first time.
Great. Thank, thank you. I, I will just register my opposition to both of those as a property owner.
Thank you. Is there further discussion of the motion under Article fourteen? We'll proceed to a voice vote. Does require two-thirds vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion on Article fourteen, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted by the requisite two-thirds vote. That concludes the business in the warrant. You are to be commended for your stamina, for staying as late as you have. Thank you very much for letting us get the town business done. May I have a motion to dissolve? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. All those in favor of the motion to dissolve, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion to dissolve is. The motion to dissolve is passed. Thank you and good evening.